Okay, this is our Board of Selectmen in the town in the Canadian regular meeting Thursday, January 28. We're starting at eight thirty seven and let's see. I would first of all move that we amend the agenda to delete item five. We'll postpone that for two weeks until February ninth.
Second year.
All right, all favor. Okay, that will concede that you have the minutes from Tuesday? Yeah, we have two.
No, for the nineteenth and Monday, the twenty fifth, the special meeting.
Have a motion to approve the minutes will be nineteenth and twenty fifth meetings.
Some will go.
Actually, do you have any comments or corrections?
None here.
Okay, can I move second, Nick?
Second year.
All favor. I approve this a virtual meeting by Zoom, so the conference public are welcome. On the agenda topic scheduled for review and vote, enter a vote, and they will be taken by email only. Address to B O S distribution at the Canada C T dot gov and Tucker will be on the lookout for comments. By email, we will read them in the course of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. So the next item is Chris Kaiser here this morning.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Next item are yours, information technology.
Yep, first one is the WAN web filter with iBoss. It's a technology we've been using for about seven years now, six or seven years. The school uses it as well, the state of Connecticut uses it as well. We do one year at a time. There is no price break with them, and we do it because there may be better technology out there as we go forward with the cybersecurity. What it does is it prevents our users and keep in mind, it's the entire way in which is the town, board of education, police department, library, everyone underneath the land. It keeps everyone clean as they go out to the internet and it keeps them protected from the internet coming back to them as well. It also helps us keep. If we monitor and filter activity, so basically it's it's our giant web sweeper cleaner, if you will.
Christian, any questions on that? Why don't you just discuss all three of them?
Okay, that's fine. Number two is a net mon, it's a network monitoring, it's also for the land. We don't, obviously, you guys have read and heard about solar winds, we don't use solar winds, we haven't used them in about five years, six years. This is a new technology that'll allow us to monitor all the traffic on all the connections to all thirty plus buildings. And report back to us and let us know when things are awry, broken, running well, all of that. Right now, we're somewhere in the amount of thirteen thousand a year, so this is a savings for us. And it will vastly improve the administration for us to administer the land itself and all the devices on it. And the third one is the rubric, the backup solution. We've been talking about this for about a year and a half, very excited for them to come out with this. The initial price was a hundred thousand dollars with C D W G and doing a lot of due diligence and testing. They've come down to forty seven thousand for three years, which is the equivalent of fifteen six a year. And right now with this, the backup solutions that we have in place, we're right around seventeen thousand a year. So it's also another savings, but the the technology behind this soft, this this device is amazing, it's a it's anti ransomware, which means it actually waits and sniffs and tries to see if ransom has hit any device, any software, any data. And it it does an administrative lockup, it's it's a it's a great technology, but we've been, excuse me, we've been talking about this for about a year and a half. Been waiting to to purchase this, so all of this is in the budget. We've just been holding out until A COVID and B. We actually did our due diligence and test tested most of this.
Any questions? I would note that Chris presented to the Board of Finance in an executive session at their last meeting. And the subject of cybersecurity is sort of a security subject that we don't go into a lot of detail in in public meetings. So with that caveat, I would ask if you have any questions, otherwise, if you want to have any executive session with Chris, we could do that.
I don't need an executive session, so most of the questions are financial, if I may. So Chris, I'm just gonna, I'll go backwards, so just starting on the rubric. So this, as I understand it, are we part of, it says Capital Region Education Council, are we part of a larger group or sort of signing into this? Is that my understanding?
That's how they price it, so I would say yes, but that's not how they approached it, they approached it as a separate customer, but yes, that's how they they sell their.
But we are like others in our region, if you will, as everybody's completely dependent on this, okay, all right, got it, okay, thank you. And then on net mon, let's see what my question was there, I think it said a this was a thousand devices, this covers, how many devices are we have altogether? Is there?
Where, that's that's the real nice thing about this, most software and hardware that does this kind of monitoring
Yeah.
hits you for every single port, this is just by device, so we're close to almost five hundred, maybe a little more than that.
Okay.
But we'll be, the the nice thing is we're going to start bringing in other devices from other entities, such as the library, we've talked to them, we can monitor their stuff. And it's so, because it's the WAN, and I know you're Kathleen, you're new to this, we we actually monitor the entire network that's connected to all the buildings through the town.
Yeah.
That's why these pieces are essential, so we know what's going on, who's who may be affected, who's who's running slowly, all that stuff.
Right.
Yep.
So I just wanted to see, you have capacity, so a thousand, you're at five hundred, so there's room here as you add, right, okay, got it, thank you. And then the last question I had was, the first one was the renewal on iBoss. And my question there was, I'm forgetting now. Hold on a second.
The words.
I think it was it, was it on the number, I'm just trying to recall what the question was here. So we had number of devices on the second one, and this, does this cover, okay, so this covers, you said, everything again, both the Board of Ed and the town, et cetera?
Correct, anybody that's using the internet connection that that we all pay for for the WAN, this monitors, filters and and keeps it safe. I forgot to mention, they came in last night late, instead of twelve four, it, we renegotiated back down to nine nine eight five and fifty three cents.
Okay, and this all shows up on on your budget, the I T budget, or are we?
Correct.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Nick?
Nope, no questions.
I would like to compliment Chris and his staff. I was also note that Todd Lobby area is chairman of the Board of Finance is a is a, his firm I S C is a technology expert. Consulting firm, so he's been all over this in terms of our security for our I T and internet access, because a lot of towns and municipalities around the country have had problems, and so Chris and his small staff of Timmy and Sal have done remarkable work for us and keeping it safe. And
Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you very much.
I would move that we approved all three items as described by Chris. Do I have a second?
Second year.
All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. We'll move to item four, which is Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, I would like to present Zach V D. We have a position open for an equipment operator two, which we talked about, actually, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, we did move on my guest, Bizito, he is moving over to fire, which has makes an opening. Zach was part of the pool of the individuals that we interviewed. He has been with S N S Industries for three years. He has his C D L, he's OSHA certified, and after the interviews, we feel that he would work very well in our highway department, and I would like to recommend Zach V D for an equipment operator two.
Any questions? I move you approve the hiring Zach V D for equipment operator two in the highway department.
Thank you.
I'll start.
Discussion.
Just one discussion, Cheryl, where does that leave us in terms of any other openings?
We are actually now fully staffed.
Thank you.
All in favor? That's unanimous. That concludes our pre-budget portion of the agenda, I would make one comment about COVID. I want to point out to residents that especially residents over age seventy five, that our human services department is calling out to our older residents to see if they have been vaccinated, to to see if they need vaccination appointments and to see if they prefer lap and center, if we can get more doses allocated in the cane, and as you know, we've been working with our state representatives to understand why New Canaan is being shortchanged versus our our surrounding towns, and you know, at a hundred a week, we're not going to get our seniors vaccinated for for a month at the rate they're going, some of the seniors over seventy five are getting appointments into middle of March. And that's really not acceptable, so Stanford Hospital unfortunately has shut down their their thousand a day doses that they receive for this week, so doses are scarce. There's promises that they're going to ramp up, but you know, we really have to get through the seventy five and holders, and especially the people who are eighty five and ninety and ninety five and and over hundred, you know, we don't want to send them to Sanford Hospital or other locations if we can keep them in in the cane, so.
Is this a Fairfield County problem or a New Canaan problem?
Well, it appears to be a New Canaan problem, because as reported in the press, as you know, as I reported to our state reps, you know, New Canaan for the first two weeks only got a hundred a week, where as Darian was getting, I forget the numbers, our four hundred first week and only administered a hundred and thirty, and so it's pretty frustrating that we, you know, if we got three hundred a week, would be done in in two or three weeks to to cover the the very elderly, and I think
Yeah, has 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 Mr. Haskell or or others in the majority party reported back to you?
Yes, we'll we'll talk to the D P H and you know, that's why I sent to you all the the information that they sent yesterday. I'm a day asked if I had heard from them, state D P H, and we had not, but on the other hand, we understand their allocation method more from that things they sent yesterday. We just wanted to be fair, you know, my view is we were shortchanged on dollars when it came to care, Zach funds and reimbursements, but I don't want to be shortchanged on life saving doses of vaccine for for, you know, the reality is the our oldest residents are the most at risk. And we have others that are waiting in line, including me. So when the governor gets vaccinated, I'll be vaccinated, but we're not in that age bracket yet, and so.
So Kevin, when you did did your, I guess you said you you have a call out right now, what percentage would you say, and with the number of the seventy five year olds and older being vaccinated through other means, do you have a certain percentage?
We have about fifteen hundred, I think we probably have six or seven hundred that have that haven't been vaccinated.
Okay.
So you know, people, keep in mind, among that's fifteen hundred, we have the residents at Wavine Care Center.
Right.
Who were vaccinated with a different federal program, the residents of schools, apartments, the some people are getting vaccinated at the at the V A. There's various various locations that some seniors are being served by.
Right.
And a number of seniors have gotten appointments through through whams, which is very clunky.
Right.
But but when they're getting appointments into mid-March, that's not acceptable, because we're not going to get down to sixty five year olds if we don't get through the seventy five year olds.
Right, right. So as I said, did you say half, that's about where we are now?
You know, the meeting, the meeting we had last night suggests it's about half, again, we haven't gotten through all the calls, but if people are are getting calls, the point is, we want to know, do you need help getting an appointment? And if especially if you're over eighty five or over ninety, we really want to try to give you vaccination directly at Lap and Center rather than having you have to go anywhere else, because it's it's well, it's it's just safer for them, we are, we are arranging rise now and forget about, but also through Wavine Care Centers transportation services, so you know, no senior over the age seventy five should feel that they they're being left out or so if anybody has a relative who's over seventy five and has not been contacted or has not made an appointment or has not been vaccinated, you know, please call human services, I forget the number, but we want to be sure our our most most elderly seniors are being.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other thought on that, that anyway. Want to move on to budget? What's your, what's our schedule, Linda, for budget?
There we go, um, this morning, we're going to complete review of town buildings. And then after town buildings, we're going to have a review of human services. And then after human services and health, human services and health, and then we'll start the final review. We'll deliberate, and then I believe we're gonna recess and then come back and and vote once I compile all the numbers.
Linda, have you put on our tablets an updated draft budget based upon the Board of Ed numbers or not?
I haven't put on the app plate, but I can share it with you, I do have it, I do, I did plug the numbers in.
Are you gonna put up now?
Sure. Can you see what I'm sharing?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Minimize this.
So
So what I did was, I don't know which, do you want to see the total budget or just the board event?
No, no, I want to see, go down, so let's stop first of all, total town. Total town has gone up from the last draft we had from one point three to one point seven percent increase.
Total town, yes.
And what accounted for that increase?
There are a couple of items I can go line by line, we talked about so far from the discussion we've had, effectively I have, and then we talked about putting back the assistant fire chief. We've put back some additional funds for trees and I can.
All right, but the assistant fire chief is that a half year, not a full year?
Well, Freddy's frozen.
That's the problem with poor internet service.
Yep, Linda, you may be able to hear us, but maybe not, but you are frozen. Give him a minute.
I guess he started to say, after we review all this, he goes off on a break, or he comes back, and so we're going to see an updated one of these, Kevin, then, is that the idea?
Well, he'll update what we're looking at right now, if any changes, we're going to talk about this morning before, and then he'll come back with a final for rest of event.
Okay, got it.
Hey, so Kev, back to the, while we're waiting, back to the COVID issue, why, why are we getting shafted by Hartford, I mean, what?
I don't know that it's intentional, I just think perhaps it's, I don't know why, but but you know, we got to fight to get it, and and if we don't get it pretty soon.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 a life or death issue, and I would hope that politics is not at play here, I'm a life or death issue, so.
Kevin, I just heard from him, he has to reboot and asking if we will move on to Tiger, and then he hopefully will be back on in a couple minutes.
Okay, Tiger? He can't, he can't. He's controlling the screen, actually, who else?
That's right.
Tucker, you could take him down as co-host and then Tiger could jump on.
Yeah.
Can you do that?
I just looked through his co-host, so let me see if I can.
Right.
And I want to make you co-host Tiger, and then you can.
Hopefully, you're saying I can't get on because somebody else is sharing their screen, can you take his screen down?
Yeah, I'm trying, let's see.
To stop participant sharing, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah. Give me a second here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right.
I'm gonna make it full screen, though.
I'm trying, hold on a second. That better?
Yep.
All right, so.
Your zoom behind, but we still see your zoom behind, but it's okay.
That's fine.
Sorry.
There you go, better.
So, well, thank you for kind of splitting our our bill here, so we can bring in town buildings, Bill Osman, and then Bill Flynn will be joining us from the nature center in about five, ten minutes, he had to, he has to get the nursery school up and running. Well, that's at nine o'clock, he's kind of freed up, so about nine oh five, nine ten, he'll come on, if there's questions on the on the nature center. So as far as town buildings go, the request this year, eight point eight million dollars, but that includes seven, a marker for seven point five million dollars for the police department, so if I remove that seven point five million, just to try to go apples to apples year over year. This year's request is one point three seven seven down from last year's receipt of one point six six four. Inside that, we have several major items that we're, we would like to work on. We have money in for the Irwin Park roof, we have monies in that is actually, we're receiving bids today, as a matter of fact, in about an hour. So this two hundred and forty six thousand dollars for the Parks Garage Roof will have a much tighter number for in about an hour, but this is for an additional shed roof off the back of the Parks Garage, we have a a lot of equipment that sits outside twelve months of the year, some very expensive capital equipment that we would like to put undercover. So this is to extend a roof, a shed roof in the back area behind the sacks garage, the entire length of the building in order to give us some additional coverage in the back for some of our equipment. We have monies in for the hotting shed, this is a sort of a joint partnership with the the conservancy. This is to repair the floor, the roof, the outside work on the building, seal up the structure and get it ready for a bathroom facility, which we're hoping and speaking with the conservancy about sharing costs on putting in a bathroom there, so that we'll have, now that we've done work on the parts here garden, we've done work in that area on the pond, the Dania Meadow. We have areas where we would like to have a bathroom, so people don't have to go into the main house to go to use the facilities, we have facility there, we have facility lower in Waviney, basically around the softball fields, but we don't have anything up high. I guess you would call it across the road from the the athletic facilities, so this is to to start that process. We have monies in to separate NICVAC from the police department, as far as their eating system goes. We had this in last year, it got deferred to this year, it certainly can be rolled into the police department construction itself, if you'd like to do that. And you know, continue, right now, we can continue to feed the NICVAC off of the police department, but at some point in time, we should make them two separate entities. Excuse me, we have monies in for the ADA renovation at the Wavine Carriage Barn, this is a, in addition to the original monies we had, we went out to bid and based upon a change in scope or a change in basically a change in scope, I would say it, we need some additional monies for that, this is in essence a hard number, since we already have bids out for that. And we have monies in for the town hall annex, this is to bring the annex onto our generator system and then do some additional work there, was basically to tie the town hall annex into the town hall generator. So we feel it's the most cost efficient way to bring that building onto a twenty four seven, three sixty five usage, especially considering that during emergencies, Bethany's staff is called upon to reach out to all of our our seniors and our vulnerable population, and she needs her facilities to do that, and then we have approximately thirteen other separate areas concerned that we can go through that are of lesser value, but not lesser importance. I don't know if you have any questions for Bill or I?
Just one, Tiger, so all, as I'm going through these on the budget, I think they're all listed under bonded, is that correct?
No, there are there are there are separate, there are some that are smaller, we have a couple of furnaces that we're going to do at the nature center that are in the twenty thousand dollar range.
Yeah, no, those I see, but I mean, on your list right here.
Yes, anything, anything, sorry, anything fifty and above, I misunderstood. But as a bond, as a bonded item.
Okay, and so, and when does that bonding happen, then, is that something that comes up in spring or?
That's really on Linda's side, as far as he, you know, researches the market and sees when he's going to actually issue. You know, the authorization comes through during the budget process, and it's issuance is later, as you know. Usually, there's a, there's a, there's a long lag, only because the moment we issue for a certain project, we only have eighteen months to spend. I R S rules, so we usually usually fund from within and then replenish at a later date after the projects are completed.
Okay, and then the only one that I see in the budget that I don't know that I see on your sheet here, and maybe it just says town hall a hundred thousand, is that? Wait, where?
We got a room on the sheet, the, we're having problems with the recurring, constant problems with the glass doors, the the main entrance to the town hall, they're they're oversized and the closures, the closing devices and the glass themselves can get out of line, and then they're burning out the closure, so we're spending quite a bit of money every year to maintain those. As a matter of fact, they came out of alignment and kind of one shipped it itself, if you look up high, you'll see that they kind of got out of a line and one shipped the other. They're just, they're at the, they're at the largest size you could put in, they're at the maximum, you know, size, and we're feeling that we should reduce that. Put in a header beam across it and then be able to then get out of this maintenance problem that we're having, because we're spending good money after bad. This is for engineering, architecture, and then installation, the money's there, it's basically a marker for for the work itself. Unfortunately, but it's a situation whereby the glass doors are just a little too heavy and they're they're causing us a maintenance concern constantly.
So Tiger, with respect to the marker for P D, that's reconstruction in place?
That's hasn't been decided, that's a, that was, that'll be up to the building committee itself. We had in here last year, five and five, we bumped it to seven and a half and seven and a half to come up to a fifteen million dollar number. Some say it might be a little bit more than that, but our feeling was that we would set out something closer to what we think. Some say it might be a little bit more than that, but our feeling was that we would set out something closer to what we think it might be, say, in the sixteen million dollar range. But my feeling was if we said it was ten, it goes to twenty, you know, we said it was twenty, it goes to twenty-two, I say it's fifteen, it goes to seventeen, so. That kind of thing, so yeah, I'm trying to, try to get closer, but not to, you know, give away the farm, so to speak.
Well, in, in your, in your, you know, considered opinion, what, what is going to be more expensive to reconstruct in place or de novo construction?
I, I, I think reconstruct in place will give us more problems than, than a new construction itself.
Nick, let me address that, let me address that, you know, as I may have said at another venue that the Building Committee has been stood up, stood up, we visited Bethel and Newtown last week. It's pretty apparent to me as one observer that rebuilding a hundred year old building for a police department doesn't work because police departments are so complicated these days. If we tried to do it, we would really just be preserving the facade and everything else would be basically gutted. And that would probably be almost as expensive as building a freestanding building if, and if we can find the right location for a new freestanding building on town property, so we don't have to buy land. I think the, I know Stuart Sawabini agrees with me that the best approach, I think Leon also would like to see a new building altogether, so.
Yeah, no, he confirmed that at our last meeting. What, what would, what would happen to the, assuming we were to do that, new construction elsewhere? What would be the disposition of the current?
Well, the good news is, we talked to a commercial broker who's a leading commercial broker in River County. He also lives in New Canaan, and he says our four million dollar assumption for the value of disposing of that property is may low and probably more in the six to eight million dollar range. To develop, to either make it residential for luxury condominiums or senior housing or whoever would, would want to build that to maximize the use as a residential location. It's a great residential location, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, that's.
Bill Flynn was able to join us if you have questions on the Nature Center side. We have two relatively small projects at the Nature Center, they're both furnace replacements there. But if you had other questions, you know, I know we had a walkthrough on Monday with him, but if you had any follow-up questions for Bill, he's, he's on the line as well.
I just, I wanted to thank Bill for, for giving us the tour. I don't know, Nick, were you able to, to do it subsequently or?
No, I need to, I need to reschedule and Bill, I, I had planned to be there, but, but got caught stuck on an airplane, actually.
Oh, dear.
On Monday.
All right, well, I, I just want to say, so, so we saw a lot of, obviously, again, Bill, thank you for the tour. The, the, the buildings, both on the exterior and interior. And of the two that are listed here, one being the education annex, the other being the animal care, they're both for, did you say, is it a boiler or?
Furnace replacement.
Furnace replacement, okay, and are those your, your top two priorities, Bill? And, and if, just looking ahead and thinking about what other areas that you're, we talked about the internal of the Nature Center Visitor Center itself, where, where do you expect those to come out over the next couple of years in terms of your requests?
So from, from my understanding, the Visitor Center Beam Project and the greenhouse, old greenhouse, antique greenhouse demolition and paving, those are things that are already gone through the process, Tiger, right? So those are already approved. So tho- those things are my priority list from a, from a town perspective. The rest of the projects moving forward are usually handled, in my opinion, very well by Bill Ossman and Tiger, and they communicate very well. And when it comes to boilers and things, that's really the town's building. So I leave it, I leave it to you all to make those best decisions.
Right, as far as, as far as the greenhouse goes, I have Joe Zaggrinsky running through the previous quotes that we had. We revisited the, the next steps with both the Building Department and the Health Department, and we'll be bringing some quotes to you shortly for a selection of a contractor and then the subsequent demolition of the greenhouse itself. And as far as the, the solidifying the roof in the Visitor Center, we'll be doing the exact same thing. We'll be bringing that now that we have some time in Bill's window. We'll be doing that now sooner rather than later. We're hoping to get everything completed before he feels where he's going to come back into full swing in June. Is that correct, Bill?
It's a, we're obviously moving with pandemic, but our, our Visitor Center has been closed since the start of the pandemic. We don't have a rush for June. It's just if it's summer and it's nice out and people starting to get vaccinated, we'd like to open the Visitor Center, but it's not a necessity, people can still enjoy the grounds on a daily basis. And it doesn't affect our summer camp if the Visitor Center were closed. So if not by June for the Visitor Center, I would say by the fall would be another, another deadline for us. So that we could start in the fall, opened up. And yeah, other, if we could get the greenhouse going, our community garden has been sold out for a few years. So we're probably going to make that another community garden space and offer more plots for an open air garden. So I think that would get use right away this year. And then, I mean, just the, the paving and the crosswalk, both things, Tiger, I know you're working on, so.
Right.
We're.
Yeah, crosswalk stayed permitted, now. And then the paving, we, we plan on having that done before, you know, before COVID ends so that, so that the center itself is all done and welcoming.
So the final question I have on this was, on the Visitor Center, it does seem that in outside years, we do have another a hundred and two thousand dollars for the Visitor Center. If we've already accounted for the beam, what is the next a hundred thousand dollars?
Bill, Ossman?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
There's, there's another hundred and two thousand dollars for the Visitor Center scheduled in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, so that would be. And that's for the nature center, I'd have to go to my records and look, I don't have that data, Bill, we're here, I get back on that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I would comment, Tiger, you done?
Yes.
And thank you, Bill. I would comment that, you know, the, I wouldn't personally agree with all these numbers, but our, our approach to this is to let the departments tee things up and see what the Board of Finance wants to do. And all these items will, will require much more diligence as we go to approaching a bonding resolution. Because some of these are estimates and, but again, I think the Board of Finance will have a lot more to do with the ordering and of these items.
Hey Tiger, where are we with the, the twenty twenty-one expenditure on the movie theater?
As far as the roof, that was for the, that was for the roof itself, we're looking to do that. That was for the roof. That'll, that'll be a spring project for us.
That's actually something, Nick, that, you know, we have a large fund, which I was kind of surprised at how large it is because we've never, we've never put back into the general fund all the revenues we received from Moti over the past several years. So that.
Where were the revenues going?
They just go into a, into the movie, movie fund, movie building fund. So that, I, was it, I think eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, Tiger?
Correct, approximately.
So that, you know, we can pay for that roof out of that fund rather than bonding it if we choose to. And, but that fund also gives us a, a, you know, we have a number of things to address before that building goes back into operation.
Yeah.
Some ADA concerns and some other rehab issues that. And we, we're having active discussions with a variety of parties about, about primarily movie theater. I think that's most likely thing we, we will plan to do with the movie theater. And if we have to turn to other alternatives, we'll talk to people before we start talking about that.
I just, can you give us an update on, I see there's thirteen thousand dollars here for the Vine Cottage. Can you tell us what that is and what are the future plans for the Vine Cottage?
That's for a standalone generator, basically a, you know, a home generator for the Vine Cottage that we could then, if we, if we went and sold the property, we could actually remove that. It's, it's a small generator, just a, for emergencies, when, during Isaias, we actually had to bring one over to her to, to hook her up. So this is a thought to have one there. And if the, if the building is sold, we can, we can remove it and put it back into our fleet, so to speak.
Is this the same product that we just did with, I think it was the fire department, where they ordered five or something of these?
Those emergencies, that was EOC, that was, that was, our request to the EOC was, no, those are basically five small Honda generators, about a two thousand KW generator. Gary Soakups, Joe ran the numbers for that. And that was our thought was, EverSource does something very similar. So when we went around with them to their medical calls, they were hooking up small generators to people. And our, our feeling was for some of our elder population, we would, it would be a good thing for us to do the exact same. So our thought was get five or six this year, five or six in a, in a subsequent year and then manage them as we go through. But that, it's, that's a much smaller generator to basically do some lights, cooling, maybe refrigerator, that kind of thing, not a, not the entire home.
Okay, and what's the long-term plan there, Kevin?
Kathleen, just to remind you, we went out with an RFP in two thousand, where are we? Nineteen? And, and that was, there were two bidders and one of them subsequently passed away, so we've been negotiating. But because of COVID, the, that's sort of input on the back burner. And we decided to put the Health Department over there with their four or five employees. So it's been a godsend during COVID to have the space. And so it's, you know, the, but the party who won the, won the RFP is still interested in, if we can come up with a plan that makes sense for both, well, anyways, it would be a residential plan. But we have to further negotiate and neither side is, is anxious to move forward because of COVID, so.
Okay, thank you.
I see we have Linda back if we need to move on.
Hey Tiger, can you remind me what the spends are, the out-year spends on Waviney for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four? You got a million eight and then a million five?
Million eight was for, that was to basically complete phase one and two, since we now kind of turned them the other way. So that was the elevator itself and the bathrooms. Right now, we, we, you know, we put the monies toward phase three, which was basically getting us in and around on the first floor. This would be the subsequent work for the elevator and the bathrooms. And then the next one was, I believe it was the, the heating or the electrician's work, electrical work.
HVAC.
HVAC.
That, is that the three million or the million and a half? Because three million is for twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's the HVAC.
Right.
If we ever decide to air condition the building.
Okay.
I think it's, Bill's, I think we replaced the furnace.
Yes.
So the heating, the heating system is, is, but the problem with that building is that all the heating pipes are embedded in concrete. So when we do, and we, we may not have to touch it for the next ten years, if, as long as we're satisfied to go another number of years without air conditioning. The building has, hasn't had air conditioning for a hundred years. And, but the point is, we, we replace the HBA system with a hot air system rather than try to, and decommission the hot water or steam, this hot water or steam, Tiger.
It's a steam system.
Yeah, and, and, and that is beginning to fail, but not to the extent where we, we haven't been able to continue to operate it. So the furnace is new, the pipes embedded in concrete are old.
Got it.
Nick, I'm going to let you ask this one, but the, the animal control shelter for, for two fifty? Comments, for, for not for this year, for twenty twenty, is that just, what, what is that plan for? Is that just a marker?
I didn't know, I didn't know, Tiger, what, what is that?
That would be, that's a, that's demolition of the building and moving forward there. So that's just in the out-years, just to give an idea of where, you know, thoughts moving forward. We need to, you know, the, the initial study that we'll do, that will determine next steps. Fifty thousand dollars for the salt barn will determine next steps as to where we go with that area of the facility. We don't, at present, we don't have any plans to knock it down or, or move animal control.
Where, where's the marker? Is it for the animal control building or is it for that, simply that building?
No, it's, it's all, well, it's, that's just for that building itself.
Yeah.
The line item is under the animal control shelter.
For twenty, for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right.
But why is that in here rather than the police department budget?
Town building. We, and we had all capital for all the buildings, doesn't.
Same reason why the police station renovation is under buildings and not police department.
The point is, you know, a lot of these markers and out-years are just things we don't track of them. They come from, a lot, a lot of them come from facility dude, which was, you know, we spent fifty-five thousand dollars on three or four years ago to, to document everything that could come up in the future. So those numbers are often, are often just markers and not necessarily very accurate, but they come out of facility dude.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, that, that's, we, we, I think we all understand it's just markers. The police department renovation being, you know, first, first among all. It's just, we're not sure what, how much it's gonna, we're not sure what we're gonna do at this point, but we have to do something.
Anything else on buildings?
The train station, ninety-five thousand on the train station.
The lights, all the exterior lighting, we lost a couple during Isaias, they're past their useful life, they're rusting out at the bottom. And this is to change them all out. There is a, there is an offset to the railroad account for this expenditure for the ninety-five, but it's basically to take care of all the exterior lighting. When we do that, we'll look at coming in and repaving the lot. I don't want to repave the lot before we do the lights in case I've got to redo some conduits and things like that that are underneath pavement. It's, it's almost like a joint project at that time.
So this is why it's in the other column and it's actually funded out of the railroad fund?
That's correct, it's in another column.
And lights in the, lights in the parking lots are owned by us as opposed to the lights on the street, which are owned by EverSource?
Correct, right, there, there are responsibility for our agreement with the Connecticut DOT to run the station. So the, the monies that go into the fund actually then turn back around to fund the maintenance of the area. Paving, lighting, repairs to the train station building itself, things of that nature.
Shall we move on? Anything else for the town buildings? Linda, do you want to go back to the, where we were?
Um, sure, while we have Tiger on, there's also a number of small funds that we also review as part of this process. Did you want to go through those and be done and then just the final review?
Go ahead.
So they begin on page, on your handout, you have page thirty-five. Page thirty-five is the dog fund. And this fund, if you look at the revenues, is a shared fund between the town clerk and animal control. So there's some dog licensing fees that go in as revenue into that fund. There's some other miscellaneous income, but then you also have income related to fees for impound and, and some contributions from reserve. And then below it, you have the expense, this is a self-sufficient fund, the ins and outs equals, but it is a budget that you approve annually, and this annual budget is thirty thousand, six hundred and five. It is an audited fund and you'll see that the ending balance in this fund currently is a little over sixty-four thousand. The next page of the small funds on page thirty-six, this is the parking fund. This is the one that you heard from Stacy speak about permit fees and seasonary parking. This is again, is a self-sustaining fund. You heard from Stacy speak about permit fees and seizing of parking. Uh, this is again, is the self-sustaining fund. Um, annually, we budget about a hundred and ninety-five thousand in revenue and a hundred and ninety-five in expenses. We typically, I think the last time we had major expenses was in fiscal year nineteen, where we did the replacement. Of the vandalized parking meters. In F Y twenty, we didn't have any expenses in this fund. And right now, this fund has a fund balance of a little over um, a million dollars. But there's some restrictions to the use of these, um, to the use of these funds. And Tiger, you can correct me because this is related to. To somewhat the use of the rail, of the rail, right?
But we have a railroad fund separate for that.
So this is separate from the railroad fund.
Right, this, this is our other parking facilities.
This is just the other parking facility fund. Um, and I know at one point, one of the discussions was for some of the um, lot improvements, uh, this could be a potential source. Of funding for improvements at some of our, at some of our parking lots. Um, the next one is the one that Tiger was referring from page thirty-seven.
And if it's, this better to talk about later, that, just let me know. But with over a million dollars in a fund like the parking fund, the other ones are obviously much smaller. How are, how is, the, how are the funds invested here?
Kathleen, for example, the, the Locust parking lot is going to be about six or seven hundred thousand dollars alone. And that was scheduled to be done this summer. Uh, but we didn't get it done because of COVID and.
We leave it in cash for the most part.
Tiger has a priority on parking lots, just like he has with roads.
Yeah.
And he, he decides and Locust is next up because it's in, it's horrible shape.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, look, how much is Locust gonna be? Six hundred, seven hundred thousand, Tiger?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so it's used, it's not sitting there for, yeah, okay.
It's not used to, to, for any other purpose, but there's plenty in the parking lot. How many parking lots do we have? Forty-three or it's crazy?
Uh, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven, I mean, like.
Okay, great. So it just happens to be a high balance, but it's gonna be taken care of.
Tiger has plans.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Uh, the next one is the railroad fund.
Just, just to be clear, we, we, earlier, Kevin, I think we, uh, uh, we actually voted. Uh, a board of selectmen, maybe not this board of selectmen. And I think town council voted to do Locust, to do the uh. Tiered parking, right?
Yeah, but that, that, that uh.
Contingent on state money, right?
Yeah, but then the state decided it was too far from the train station to qualify.
Right, right. Yeah, I just, I just, historically, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
You know, remind everybody that we did, we did try to do tiered parking and had a, a nice plan, but we couldn't get the state money.
Uh, the next one is the railroad fund on page thirty-seven. And this, uh, the source of revenues are a combination of parking meters, um, and, and tickets issued. Um, and at the parking lot, uh, we also have a small rental uh, revenue that goes in uh, for the entity that's located at the. Train station. And we have some miscellaneous expenses related to, to the operation. Of the facility, um, and that total budget annually, we budget about a hundred and ninety-three thousand or so. On an annual basis, um, for that lot. We do have a small rental property fund. This is where we um, we deposit some of the um, rentals that the town, properties that the town owns. Uh, the budget for this is ninety-six hundred. I believe we have an adjustment for this one I got yesterday from. From Bill, it's gonna be ten thousand and so I'll provide that information when you get to approval of the budget. Um, I have an updated spreadsheet that I'll share with you on that. Um, and then you heard on the pool fund when Steve presented. On recreation. And then page forty is the final fund, is the movie theater fund, uh, that was just mentioned um, a while ago. Um, and this fund currently has a balance, end year balance of about eight hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and those funds have been. Identified for potential uh, use for facilities improvement, um, on that structure. And so that concludes the small funds that we typically approve as part of, um, part of this budget. Uh, Kevin, you're scheduled to hear from Health and Human Services. Do you want to hear from them before we go into the final review of where we are? Or do you want me to jump into the overview?
Uh, they're not on yet. I had told them ten o'clock. They were doing some clinic-related activities, so I told them ten.
Yeah. And actually, the overview, I just wanted to see where we are versus where we're gonna be by the end of the, the morning.
Sure, um, let me share my, try this again.
Do you have optimum, Linda?
I do. And I'm actually hardwired. I am, I was using Wi-Fi. I've been, I've been doing the hardwire because I have some Wi-Fi issues. Um, upgraded everything I could, and but still. Can you see my screen?
No.
Alright.
Are you still permissioned?
Yes, I made him co-host, yeah.
I am.
Here we go.
There you go, okay.
Okay.
So it's, Linda, I wanted to point out, so the uh, town. Is now at one point seven percent increase compared to one point three with our last draft. And that was primarily because of the assistant chief, fire chief, which is only in there for half a year, not a full year.
Yes, so there are a couple. So here, let me share this screen, cause what I did was um. I did a before and after, so this is a request, uh, and this is where we are now. And these, this last column are the changes. So I'm just gonna scroll down here to show you what makes up the difference. Uh, the first change, this is the fire department, so you'll see that the part-time half salary for half a year is fifty-six thousand. With social security, corresponding social security of forty-three hundred. So total increase to the fire is about sixty thousand. And then we made adjustments to, this is the ambulance corps yesterday. Uh, the discussion was to get them for a two percent increase. So that gets to a national ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-five, which puts them at two percent year over year. The other change that we've done is uh, tree budgets. We added twenty thousand, uh, tree maintenance uh, for the tree warden. And then I also made adjustments for.
That's, that's for tree planting? Tiger, Tiger, you said there was already money in the budget for tree planting, but we wanted to add more. Is that what we talked about?
We have a tree maintenance line that, that where we can plant out of, that's planned. Yeah, that's for pruning and uh, other, uh, other work. And then uh, and then we utilize that. At times for tree planting, so we felt uh, we, we should bump up that line item.
But we also want to bump up tree planting, that's just.
That would be part of it, that's correct. That's, we just put it into that line item, um, itself.
And then the last change was just um, adjusting for what the B O E uh, presented last week. Uh, we initially had. Had at the guidance ninety-two point eight, and then with what was approved by the Board of Ed, it brings them to ninety-five four. Which is two point five increase overall.
So that, that's a prime, that's a big driver in terms of the change in the overall budget in terms of uh. Whereas the Board of Finance's guidance was to come in at one and a half to two, the operating for the. Where are we? The operating for the Board of Ed is coming in at three point eight. And uh, the health uh, insurance with. We had, what it financed had assumed three point five, it's coming in at fourteen point six. Which gives an overall five percent increase, which is uh. Uh, kind of blows our numbers down below when we get to them.
And then the last change was last night, I think you saw the email, Kevin, from Stacy regarding to the software. Uh, licensing that dropped five thousand dollars, so I made that five thousand dollar adjustment. So the total change so far is at two point six million. Which is a two and a half percent increase.
Right, total expenditure budget of rather than point eight, we now are up at two, two and a half.
Correct.
But how does that drive the uh, the final numbers in terms of the?
So, in looking at the final numbers, so again, this is that same information, just. Uh, categorized in groups. So what I do here is just looking at where we are in terms of, um, let me show. Let me hide this so you can see the column names. So what that does to the, to the end here, I did, uh, you know, we went into the budget with a seven point seven grand list estimate. We've heard from Sebby that the grand list is seven point eight, so I've incorporated those changes um, on here.
What, what does that represent in a dollar increase? That's a seventy-two million?
It was like a seventy-two million dollar increase from what it was before. From last year's. And. So based on this budget, based on um, making up revenues to balance the budget. We would be looking at, uh, this is where we would come from. We would come from a mail of eighteen point one to a nineteen point three. And an amount to be raised from taxation, amount to be raised from taxation of one thirty-nine to one forty-two. Again, that's largely driven by the two and a half million dollar increase, um, education budget. Because the other increases are relatively small. Compared to where we are.
So if we, you know, I realize the, I guess the relevant discussion is if we're trying to seek overall objectives, I mean, the Board of Ed, I think has more. More to face with the Board of Finance, um, but the uh. And it's a difficult year for them to plan, but uh. From our point of view, whether we're trying to help the situation, whether we, I guess we'll leave it to the Board of Finance as well on our side as to whether they want to make further cuts, but uh.
I just want to uh, ask Linda, I, I, I can't see the top of, I think I'm looking at my own printed copy here, but when we look at the. Increases, it's the, it's the year-over-year change over the budget, not what the uh, projected is, right? So.
Right, okay, so I can, I can show that column.
Right. So it's budget to budget?
It's budget to budget.
Right, okay.
Budget to revise budget, yes.
It's budget to revise budget, okay. And so, and when, when we, when we went into the budget for this year, it was pre-COVID. Um, so I'm just trying to, it, it, it is sort of a um. Trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison, if you will, um, recognizing what we have gone through. Particularly in the Board of Education for uh, dealing with um, the pandemic, but. Um, so I just, I, I think we're, this is the right way to look at it. It's, it's a budget to budget rather than what the projected is going to be. Um, so I just want clarity on that. That's, that, is that your understanding? Is that how we typically look at it?
Right, uh, but I think it is important to point out that when we, when the budgets were approved. They were approved without any, um, there were no COVID impacts, right?
Correct.
Um, in the, in the budget.
Right.
So we, because the budget were approved before we made, we started experiencing any significant changes.
Right.
Another thing to consider, Kathleen, is that uh. We ended last year with savings overall because of COVID. We spent money on COVID last year that was in that uh, net savings.
Yeah.
And we're getting reimbursements in this fiscal year, so the, uh, the revised budget will show that. Those revenues when you're comparing.
Oh, well, okay.
It makes it very complicated to try to see the full picture of.
Yeah.
Like we see, we see, we see the mill rate going up by a whole point.
Right.
Which is largely um, Board of Ed driven.
And, and what percent is this? Hell, I'm wondering, what, is there a, a opportunity here to kind of drill down more into the health? Health fund contribution? That was a fairly.
On the town or on the Board of Ed?
Uh, Board of Ed, well, both, actually, but.
So the, the town, the town side, the health is going down two percent? Back up to the town line item?
Town, yes, it's going down two point one percent.
Okay.
And Board of Ed is going up fourteen point.
Right.
The Board of Ed does provide a detailed um, sheet of their internal service fund.
Yep.
Uh, which. So that, yeah, so they do provide information that backs, that provides backup to these numbers.
That's gonna be a big discussion with the Board of Finance.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be happy to participate in that conversation.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're discovering that we're, we're, we're probably the only town around that has a, two, two separate internal service funds. Being self-insured, and I, you know, I think Board of Finance really is, wants to go to one.
Yeah.
So we can take health out of the, out of the equation altogether and just look at operating and, and uh, health is gonna be what it is, provided you manage your risk properly.
Yeah.
And the whole point of having an internal service fund is not having wild fluctuations.
Right.
You're basically an insurance company and you can either have your uh.
Try to smooth it out, right?
Yeah, smooth, you, you, you have reserves to smooth things out.
Right. So if we do just take them out, both Board of Ed and the town, just sort of set that aside for just half a second, what are we looking at? Uh, in terms of an increase?
If I zeroed out the numbers?
Yeah, just, yeah, help me through that.
Well, keep in mind too, last year's budget overall was helped by the Board of Ed because they took two million dollars out of the internal service fund. And we therefore. And they took it out by virtue of us now appropriating two million dollars into the internal service fund this current fiscal year. You know, had they left that money in or had let one million dollars in, we wouldn't have had this wild swing this year.
Okay, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at that, but just, so just, okay.
Yeah, those are two big numbers, and therefore just taking those two out, you know, you drop to a hundred and forty million dollars. You're dropping almost seventeen million dollars out.
That's not the way to look at it, though, that, that.
I don't think that's the way we would do it. Uh, what we would probably do is probably.
That whole fluctuation of the uh, the service funds, both at the town level and the Board of Education are driving this, this, these. These huge changes. Am I understanding that correctly or?
Right, so if we took them out, and let's, I guess maybe one, a better way to look at it, if you just take both years out.
Yeah.
And see what, what is the difference.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so both years out, then you'd be looking at about a two million dollar increase for non. One thirty-eight point six to one forty point two, without the town health contribution, without the Board of Ed contribution.
And that percentage increase is. Two million over one thirty-eight. So it's, you're, you're gonna be less than your two percent here. That's your less than two percent. I, I, I just. Okay, sorry, I messed up your whole spreadsheet by asking that question. Just back out of it. I just, so roughly, it looks like two million change on a, on a.
Yeah, and I think, I think I did that wrong, cause I think I took it out of the request column and put the.
And the lunch break, take a look, but I, I just think it's healthy to kind of understand. What the percentage increase for all of our expenses, uh, net of revenues. Uh, just setting aside the healthcare for just a second, so I know what we're dealing with. That has to be addressed, no question, uh, the internal uh, service funds, et cetera. But it just kind of um, certainly helps me understand a little bit more about what we're looking at in terms of uh. More controllable expenses, if you will. Uh, I mean, the, the health insurance is gotta be controllable as well, but it, it helps us sort of separate those two and.
And then the two primary, primary drivers there, Kathleen, on the Board of Education side are the um. Busing, changes start times and the COVID, I think the nine hundred thousand dollars for COVID expense is in their budget. Right, 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 uh, London?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, that's a big assumption. I mean, I, I don't think the Board of Finance wants to look at it that way, because they. I mean, that's a big assumption. I mean, I, I don't think the board of finance wants to look at it that way because they'd rather just see where we are come. June, July and August about COVID coming into the new school year. Rather than assuming they're going to need 400,000 dollars.
Are you suggesting like sort of deal with it as it comes through rather than budget for it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what they did last fall when they, when they did a special operation. Yeah, so.
But, but putting aside, putting aside COVID for the schools, putting aside start times. Um, you know, their budget is, is relatively flat. I mean, obviously. Look, look, the single biggest driver of all costs in this town are the teacher salaries. Now, is that controllable? Well, yeah, it's controllable every few years when we renegotiate the CBA, but. Um, I mean, I think the board of Ed's budget is relatively flat.
Not flat.
But for, but for the start times and but for the.
They have a $60 salary line and, and if you add that two and a half percent salary overall increases, which are step increases, not uh.
But, but exactly. I mean, you know, and that, that's. It's been that way forever, you know? So it's, it's controllable every few years when you know renegotiate the CBA and then, and that's true, you know, for all of our collective bargaining agreements.
And the number of employees.
But I, I, I think, I think they, they're only asking for a 1.5 FTE increases, I recall, so that's. That's not bad.
So is HHS the final presentation before we?
Yes.
And Jen is on?
And Jen, um, health, yes. Jen and Bethany.
Bethany should be on in about one minute.
Jen, would you like to talk about your, just help? We, I know we did an overview yesterday briefly, but you were, you were on, on duty. So we missed your presence.
The hardest working gal in show business.
Boonda, I'm not really sure what you want me to do if you already gave the presentation. I mean, we do have the added position of the sanitarian that we did mid-year. So now it's just going through the, of the budget process. That's Shannon. Who's been working, you know, all our test sites and then doing septic and everything else. And then we have the grant funded positions of the public health nurse. That's 100% funded by the grant that I wrote and got approved. And then the medical director positions half funded by the other grant that I got, the public health emergency preparedness grant. But the only thing we really requested an increase on was the overtime because obviously my staff is working, you know, a lot of hours.
Questions for Jen?
I, I'm just trying to actually find the page number here because I did write a question down.
This didn't used to be a separate budget. This was part of the land use budget and we made it.
From Tuesday, 11?
11, thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Yeah. And I just, I think, um, Jen, it, it really has to do with what you've already mentioned. I just didn't know how we actually show it. So where you do have those grants, are we showing the full salary and then the grant line is up above in terms of the offset or are we showing the net?
We're showing it under the grant funded positions.
Okay.
Where the, the partial salary that's covered for medical director out of my grant. And then the, the rest of it that's paid by the town is under part-time salaries. And then the public health nurse is under the grant funded completely because it's 100% right now funded by the grant.
Right.
The two-year grant. So it will get me through the next fiscal year and the fiscal year after that only partial. And then at that time, we assess whether we put it into a budget position.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jen?
Yeah, I do. I have a question. Jen, what else, if anything, do you need? We're in the middle of the pandemic. There's, there's no more important department frankly than your department. Okay, and you've done an incredible job under ridiculous circumstances. And so my question to you is what, what else do you need for us to support you and your team? If, if anything?
Um, just sleep and vaccine, that's all I need.
Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like the state's being very helpful.
No. Well, I guess we'll find out later today or maybe tomorrow morning or whatever, but um, no, the biggest help.
Governor, Governor Lamont will, will wake up and Governor, Governor Lamont will give us some vaccines.
I mean, even if he gives me 200, I'll be happy at this point. But um, no, the biggest help has been, you know, anytime I went to Cheryl, you know, or, or Kevin, if we needed to pull someone like Anna's been helping us a lot. And then having, you know, Tracy Carl and Jenny and those people do the test site and they're also going to be working my vaccine site. You know, as part-time, you know, temporary employees and Anna obviously is a, a real employee with Bill. That's been my biggest help. I mean, Anna has been invaluable to me and my staff. Being here and learning everything.
If I'm, if I'm a town person, you know, civilian, whatever, and I want to help you. Your, your team and, and, and your department, what, what can I do as, as a concerned citizen?
Well, follow all the rules so we can get the case numbers back down. That would be great. That, that would be number one I would ask for. And then, you know, number two, just, you know, make sure when, you know, people will talk because it's a small town, that accurate information is being shared. You know, the stuff that's put in the alcohol and on the website or through Bethany's and, you know, Aggie's messages is all the correct information. What's getting, you know, kind of jammed up in the works is sometimes people are getting inaccurate information. And that's not helpful, you know, at all.
Social, social media?
Yeah. You know, it's just, it, it, it doesn't do anyone, you know, a service when you give people the wrong information. Like right now, we're focusing by state directive 75 and over. You know, and the governors, you saw in the email the other night, Nick, about the essential workers, he makes that definition in his group of who an essential worker is. So I don't have the, you know, arbitrary control to decide what business in town is going to be considered essential. It's very clear in that definition of what that is. And I think we just gotta, as that definition gets completely solidified, right now it's still a draft. We need to just be clear and I've already talked to Laura Butt about it as well. That, you know, we get the accurate information out there because what's going to happen, you know, and I know. The restaurants, because they're essential, are going to be up for vaccination and the other, you know, stores are going to be like, well, what about me? And we have to follow the directives.
And, and the reason for that, let's, you know, keep in mind, um. We've had 14 deaths outside of senior facilities since last March. And the problem trouble is the state will, will report a death as the COVID death when really the person had serious. Life-threatening conditions already. So we're not really focused anymore about reporting what the state reports because it's just not, you know, there's been very few people under the age of 60. Uh, that have died. And so therefore the, the vaccine should be focused on the, on the, on the seniors who are vulnerable first and foremost. I mean, people can debate this, but you know, if it. But there, there are other vulnerable people, people, cancer survivors that, that should get the vaccine perhaps before many other people that are under age 65, so. Or under, under age 75 for that matter.
Yeah, and then unfortunately we have to follow whatever the governor puts out in the next phase. They're supposed to move to the 65 to 75 range. And then after that potentially be the vulnerables, but it, it all depends on the doses. It's the supply. Otherwise, if you had more supply, they would easily do what you just said, Kevin, and it would make logical sense because they have serious issues. But because of the lack of vaccine nationwide, that's what is driving this issue. When Johnson &amp; Johnson gets approved and that becomes available, that will be a game changer. It's one dose. You don't have to do these two-dose clinics and all this other stuff.
Well, but the other, the other critical issue is, I mean, some states are making decisions, like I think in New York State, they're vaccinating teachers. Whereas, you know, our, the evidence indicates the transmission is not occurring in schools. Transmission is not occurring in restaurants to any great degree. Massachusetts is opening up their restaurants because they're experienced. The, um, where people are, are, are getting, whereas transmission is occurring is young people in a family. Um, and it goes both ways. The adults can give it to the kids and so the, the number of cases are family related. Um, and um. So the, the seniors ought to be the first to be protected. They, they are the most vulnerable.
So I'd like, so, so Jen on that line and Kevin shared with us roughly, um. Is, is it your understanding that in terms of our population, 75 and above? Uh, are we about halfway through the vaccination process with that population, whether we've done it, you know, here at Waviney or you've done it at Lapham or, and uh. Where else they can get it at Stanford? I know Ridgefield was a, a, a source as well for a while. What, where are we now in terms?
I would say, you know, because you have what, 1,500 roughly? Between our 200, sending them to Stanford, sending them to Ridgefield, and then remember Waviney's residents count as our residents.
Right.
Waviney's home care, you know, I would say that'd be pretty, you know, close to accurate statement. You know, without having the complete hard data because in VAMS, I can't get reports on stuff like that. It would be great to know, but.
Right.
Um, and, you know, that's why I'm just hopeful because we still have, you know, a lot on our list of people that called and, you know, wanted to be on it. So even if we can just get 200 doses next week. It would be, you know, a huge help because a lot of these, especially the 85 and up. You know, really can't, you know, get to these other sites and have mobility issues. And we spend so much time at the clinic helping them, you know, not only just getting from their car to the door, then to the booth, filling out their paperwork. You know, walking them to the other rooms, Steve Banker walking them back to the car. And you know, you're not going to get that, you know, personal level at a hospital or anywhere else. And you know, and they're all, they've all been very appreciative, very thankful and. There hasn't been any issues and we have plenty of vaccinators, so I mean, given that four-hour timeframe, I can easily add the other 100 without even skipping a beat. You know, it doesn't change anything, you know, for us. We have the capacity. We just need, again, the state to be a little nicer.
Another piece of the puzzle, another piece of the puzzle is Russ Barksdale, Waviney is prepared to vaccinate people who are homebound. We, we, Waviney, uh, Waviney at Home Services, but they don't have the vaccines. They gave the vaccine to people in residence at a senior facility.
Yeah, and, and also a lot of the local doctors in town that I've been communicating with, they've given me their patient lists as well, 75 and up. Of ones that they've already communicated to that want to be vaccinated that live in New Canaan. So we are all working together for the common goal. You know, and data sorting it by date of birth, of course, and you know, it's. Just need a little bit more and we'll get through it.
The other point, the other point I wanted to make was that, you know, the seniors are vulnerable if they're having caregivers come in or if they're having cleaning people come in. And we've seen that, I mean, people who are otherwise very safe. Forget the fact that having a cleaning person come in, um, makes them vulnerable and we've, we've seen those cases, so.
Well, the good part is a lot of the home health have already been vaccinated now because of phase 1A, so that's good news.
Thanks for what you're doing, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Am I, am I done?
You're never, you're never done, Jen.
Yes, I am, Nick.
Okay, Bethany, you're up.
Hi. All right. Looking, is everybody on the? Got the page in front of them?
What page are we on here?
I don't have a page number.
Page 11, Linda?
The revenues are on page 11 and she only has one line item, which is the flu clinic revenue. And she doesn't have any capital. And.
I think it's 18.
This is on 18. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one thing to note is that, uh, we've heard that the state DPW was allocating vaccines based upon flu vaccinations. And um. Residents in New Canaan, you know, we don't, we have a relatively small number anymore that use human services flu shots because people can get it easily at CVS and Walgreens. I don't know if the state is keeping track of that, yeah. And so that ki- kind of, that, that may have explained why Southbury got 680 doses and gave it to teachers. When they were not supposed to. And um. What's the other point that the uh? There is no flu this season, by the way. You notice people wear masks. It's totally eliminated seasonal flu, so. So far, it's a long flu season, but uh.
Yeah. This might become the flu. Yeah, I mean, we're. All right, um, so looking at the, starting with the salaries. We have, we're maintaining the usual. Going through the one change is for the Human Services Program Assistant. Uh, we are. Looking to increase her salary by $5,000. Reason for this is the food pantry has just taken up so much of her time and we are going into the overtime to pay her. And really it's a job that is going to be continually on this level of our increase has doubled. And as a result, um, the whole process, the volunteer process. When I say our process has doubled, but also our, so the amount of food has doubled, so therefore our volunteers, she's working on the weekends. Um, she's accommodating food drives that can only drop off on the weekends. Um, so she's there. It's, it's just the whole thing is turning into way more. And I don't see a let up. On this. So that was the $5,000 increase and as a result, then the overtime we can stay out of.
Has the volunteers been restricted because of COVID, Bethany?
Yes, and that's another thing. Most of our volunteers were 65 and older.
Right.
Uh, so we have. Maintained the ones that were under 65 and gotten a few more, but because of the space, we can't have a lot of volunteers. So, so everything is cut back. Where we need more, but everything that's more, you know, we're doubling up on everything and it is create, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big coordination. An effort. Right now during the winter, well, right now the COVID, we are having a drive up only. We are not having the, the seniors or the families come in. So we have volunteers literally pushing the carts up to the cars. And then putting them in the car. Uh, this is the only way and listen, the food pantry, as a result, more people are coming to the food pantry. That qualify, seniors during the winter months. This is a great way to get them.
Yeah, we've got a lot of donations.
It, it's, it's amazing. The food donations have been incredible, uh, from agencies to, it's been a great project for organizations in school, kids. I've been on a lot of Zoom meetings explaining the food pantry. Uh, for kids, understanding it, so it's a great hands-on community effort.
The, the number of clients, if you will, is, I think at one time was it three, as many as 300? Has that changed at all?
No, the clients, uh, the, our height, but pre-COVID, we had. 60 clients, I'm, I'm sorry, 45 households that qualified and we'd get around 30. Shoppers for those households every two weeks. We now have 85 households and we're getting 60. Shoppers every two weeks, so it, it's doubled.
Yeah.
And um. The good news is food stamps, the SNAP system, you know, they've, they've upped the amount of money that people are getting, so that's helped. But we're still needing to bridge a gap. And for many more people.
Yeah.
Um, so the whole process, the volunteer process. And also the donations, you know, ends up, we have to write, do a tax letter of acknowledgement for every donation. And she's, she's right up to date. I mean, she sends those out within four or five days of receiving them and depositing them. So across the line of running a food pantry, it's just doubled. So that is my, uh, that's my argument or support for that increase. And um. So salaries. What we have done, Harrison and I went through this, as well as Joanne, uh, Noon went through the Special Projects Fund that for years has been piling up, and we have not used it for general assistance, although it's been designated to paying, uh, people's needs. And so we do food, clothing, shelter. And so Joanne went through the, I don't know, hundreds and something thousands of dollars and broke it down to what we have. And the idea was suggested, I, you know, totally agree, that we take off the twenty-two thousand line item until we can use this money that we have for, uh, and use it down, because people have donated this money and want it spent in these designated areas. So we have, I think, about sixty-some or seventy-some thousand just flat off the, for general assistance. I mean, we could live on that for three years, you know, on, on this line item. We could take that off. And that cuts it down like a six percent. And then with the understanding that if the general assistance, if we can't maintain it, and we, I don't think we would go beyond twenty-two thousand. Um, and I'll explain a phenomena that's happening now that it's interesting with COVID. So that being said, that is where the decrease of twenty-two thousand, we would like to use the Special Projects Fund and, and utilize that money that people have donated to be used.
About the general assistance line?
That's the general assistance line, um, five-three-six-five-oh.
Yep, yep.
Now, if you notice, year to date, we've only used six thousand nine hundred and three dollars of that. People are requesting less money for their needs. And it's the, we're asking, they're not spending money on food, I mean, the ordering out, the discretionary income they have, since they have more of it, because they are at home from COVID, they're able to pay their fuel, their electric bill. Um, they're up to date on their rent. The, it's just amazing, the phenomena that's happening. So we have literally paid out, we've had less requests. I've talked to the small town, uh, human service directors in the area, asking them if they're, they're seeing this trend. And they said, absolutely. People are saying, we're not spending so much money on junk anymore. Um, the kids being at school, wanting to buy the most expensive this for clothing, things like that. It's not happening. Which is allowing them to have more income or better, at the end of the month, they're budgeting, they're being able to pay their bills.
Bethany, could you mention Marcy and the plan to have her spend time over at Lapham Center?
Yeah, we would like to do that. We would like to, um, increase her presence over there as her, with, with her licensed, her, you know, bed, bed up her background, her social work background. And the seniors, it's, it's prime for a place for her to be.
Yeah, so we're very fortunate to be able to hire Marcy from, from Darien, where she had been working for the Senior Center for ten years. And she, she's not only a, uh, licensed, uh, social worker, but, and with Lynn Bond's retirement, who was a social worker, um, the plan is to have Marcy spend time once Lapham reopens, um, maybe three days a week over there, like in Lynn's office, so that she, uh, Lynn's going to be part-time for another, I think the rest of the year. Is that, Cheryl correct? That, um, that we will have, um, a licensed social worker interacting directly with the Lapham, uh, senior.
Yeah. So she'll be spending time there. So she's a face to a lot of people, as we say, you know, that really, that's their socializing, and it's a great way to, uh, keep the pulse on, on a lot of active seniors that are still going to Lapham. Uh, but they, at the same time, they might have needs that might be a little more exposed by Marcy seeing them there. So we would like to do that. And then, you know, she'll be at this office too. And it's just, it's just been a wonderful addition from, uh, last year when you passed that this, this position be available. And it's just been, it's been worked, it's worked out very well. And with COVID, it's been invaluable. So. Uh, the other items, uh, we've gone down and looked at our year-to-date usage, and we have tweaked, you know, five hundred dollars here, fifty dollars, you know, a hundred dollars on these items. Last year was the first year I did the budget, and I scaled it down immensely. And, uh, we were able to tweak a little more too. So it gives you a negative six percent decrease. Um, the understanding is, is the Special Projects Fund goes low, uh, in the next three years, we'd like to have that line item reassessed if we can't maintain, uh, helping the assistance level through Special Projects donations from the, the community. But so far, it's just been phenomenal. And we'd like to, you know, they have a right, the, uh, residents to have that money used. So I want to pull it out of Special Projects. I would only give probably twenty-two thousand max, although we're going way below that. Um, but that's as far as I would go, is twenty-two for each year. And it would give us at least three years out. I just wanted to go through the, uh, something that's coming down the pike for these, uh, outside agencies that request a grant every year. If everything else has remained constant, grants except kids in crisis, um, their requests this year, normally we give them fifty-six thousand each year. And their request this year was eighty-nine thousand. So we had, uh, Harrison and I have done some research, and we have spoken with kids in crisis. They are speaking to the commission on Thursday. They do not want to lose New Canaan, because New Canaan is, is, is absolutely the starter. It, it began here, kids in crisis. They now, other communities, Westport, Darien is trying to get them, but they just, they can't get them without, um, it's just, it's too many towns, and they want to keep their quality. So they really, ninety thousand covers a lot of intrinsic issues in terms of children that are in crisis. There's a place for them to stay outside of their home. It's not just the counselor in the school system that's separate from the Board of Ed. There's a lot of other, uh, intangible, uh, that's going on for these children. They also, so that ninety thousand is a salary with benefits as well as the outside resources they need if a child has to leave the home and use other services. Okay. So we said there's no way that we can go up to that amount. And that's what Westport is paying, uh, the other towns are paying that much. We said we could go up two thousand dollars. So we were requesting a fifty-eight thousand dollar grant versus the fifty-six thousand. So that's where that two thousand is. They eventually would like to get a counselor in the middle school as well. Uh, this is something, I've looked, and there's not another organization, agency that offers something like this, and that it's separate from the Board of Ed, so that the child can work closely without the Board of Ed parameters going on. And the counselors are at the Board of Ed, they're, they're worked. They're doing, they're busy with other things, and to have a crisis for a child needs extra special care. So they're able to provide this. Uh, but they're going to be asking for more and more each year. They do want us to get up to a level of, uh, independently being able to carry one person completely a year. They don't want to lose us either.
Bethany, I was on the Youth Commission when that, um, this program began.
Yeah.
And we had it for a couple of years at high school. We did have one at Saks for a year or two, and then it was cut. But, um, I think her name was Amy Chamberlain, and it was a very successful program.
Yeah. So it's something to consider, uh, that's coming down the pike. You know, we told them we cannot move up that quickly. The disparity between what they're asking for and what we can do is just, it's, it's not possible. But we gave a goodwill two thousand. And I'm, then we're wondering, we're working with them, um, could we reach out to the found, Community, New Canaan Community Foundation? Could we reach out to some of those strongholders in the town?
I, I think the Community Foundation does give them a grant. When I was on the board, Kathleen was on the board.
Okay.
Over in Koskow. I mean, they do a remarkable job for us. We, 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 we need the counselor in the high school who's done a great job.
Yeah. I mean, if we don't pay it, they're going to pick up Darien. And then we don't have anything. I've looked, there's nothing else like this. There's drug and alcohol crisis and things like that, but nothing for the whole child.
Yeah, what, what, what they do, the people don't realize, if, if a child is in a, for example, an abusive household, there's a dormitory, and they, they actually have a dormitory for, for infants as well as, uh, children up to high school age. And if they have to remove a, a, a child from the home, they, they actually, uh, stay there, and they drive them to school every day. And it's, it's, it's a unique service that we have. So we can't lose them. And, and, you know, I wasn't aware that they'd made an additional request, Bethany, so.
So they did, um, and they said that some of the towns that are having a difficult time, but still want them, you know, they are going to the, some, the Board of Ed is paying, uh, for some of it. I mean, they are getting creative. We might have to get creative. I don't know, but I do, I'm a proponent of doing this and holding this.
Are you aware, are you aware of what the Community Foundation gives them?
No.
Yeah, let, let's, let's verify that.
Yeah. So that is a process, this, this is a project that, um, there's more to be said, but at this time, we'd like to give two thousand more.
So, so Bethany, this, it covers one individual that it's, covers the high school? Is that what you said?
It covers one counselor for the high school.
Okay. And, and how, and so their proposal of going up to eighty-nine was to cover that?
No, this is another thing. I asked, I said, so this is just for the high school? And I said, well, if your middle school goal stays there, what would that entitle? What would that incur for us? And they said, and this is where there's room for discussion, um, they said it would be another ninety thousand.
Okay.
So I've got a little issue with that, but I can understand definitely the, the, um, salary.
The trouble with them, they used to get money from the state, and they, they'd been cut way back by the state.
Yeah, they, okay. So, yeah, so they're, they're, they're struggling, and we want to support an unbelievable asset that we can have with the town. So there's going to be some tweaking here. And I do think, you know, we'd have to consider, how badly do we want it? And, uh, I think it's definitely.
How badly do you want it?
I, I think, um, I'm a proponent of finding a, a, a middle ground. Um, I don't think we can pay two ninety thousand dollar. I don't think it costs ninety thousand for each person. I think maybe we can lump it and see where there is a commonality. There's a voice of reason for what we can afford.
But a goal, setting aside what the amount might be, but a goal would be to have somebody who could, even on a part-time basis, be uh, present at Saks.
At Saks, even if it started as a part-time, I don't know if they could get a part-time worker, maybe you have part-time at Saks and part-time at another middle school in the area. Um.
Or I'm not sure why the person at the high school can't do some time at Saks. But the point is, even, you know, regardless of the fact there's not a person at Saks, the middle school kids are covered by the program. So if someone has to be taken over to Koskow, um, that.
Yeah.
This is, we're not just paying for the, uh.
That's it.
So when it looks high, like, oh, my God, the salary's not, it's not, there's a lot of other, uh, issues that, you know, we're covering a lot of other costs that we share with the other area schools and, and, and towns that have this counselor. So definitely, uh, there will be more discussion as I understand and learn more about this request. And so next year, it's going to be, it's going to be there. Probably for a larger amount, but for this year, having that grant, two thousand goodwill increase. And that, any questions?
Hey, Bethany, thank you for all your, you know, great efforts during COVID.
Absolutely.
It's, it's so reassuring to have you, um, in the position that you are, and really appreciate it.
Thank you. It's, it's been going well. Um, seniors are pleased, the, uh, it's interesting what I said with the decrease in requests for money. We have an increase in requests for services, you know, in terms of people need resources for mental health, uh, domestic violence, things like that. Uh, so it's been great, and that they still consider us human resources. It's not just about giving money. Everybody seems to be out of the crisis mode now. They've restructured their life to COVID. And, uh, some of the things, it's been, you know, people are spending less, so they're able to afford some of these, uh, utilities and things. At the same time, you know, it, it does take a beating on, on the mental aspect of all ages. So our, our cases are deeper and more involved as COVID continues on. That's it.
And Bethany, talk to Lauren Patterson, so you understand the overall financials of, uh, of kids in crisis.
Definitely, I will.
And how much they're giving, because that, that, that problem can be solved to some extent. But I think they lost two million dollars of funding from the state, so.
I heard it was a big chunk, yeah. And, and it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful agency that I don't want to lose. So I will be, I will be a proponent for it. So bear with me.
Okay, thank you, Bethany.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Where to next, Linda?
So Kevin, Linda has been bounced again, unfortunately. Um, he's needing to be working at home today, so that's why he's having these issues. He also needs, um, about an hour after we finish up here to, to take everything, any of the changes, and put it all into a final document that you all can, um, review and vote on if appropriate. Um, so I think that's where he wanted to go, unless, uh, he's trying to come back on. And, uh, if you all have additional questions for him, he can come back on. Or if you're satisfied, we can, um, take the break now and reconvene in an hour.
I'd like him to come back on. We have to summarize some things before we, uh.
Okay, he is working on that.
When he comes back on, let, let me mention a couple of things before we, uh, he gets back on. One, you've got a fee memo from every department chair, uh, department head, um, because the co, the town code requires us to review all fees annually. Um, it doesn't have to be done in the budget process, but we figured it made sense to at least gather the information during the budget process. Because none of these fees are, are really key to generating more revenues. They're usually not designed to. Um, so we're not looking at finding money in these fee increases. We're looking at, at whether the fees are appropriate um, to go up or down. And, um, we, we asked, so, uh, I propose we don't do this this morning. We could perhaps do it in two weeks. Because we're not going to jet, unless anybody's seen in any, any fee that they think is a revenue generator that they want to increase. I, I have, I haven't seen any that makes a difference in the budget.
I reviewed it. I, I appreciate all the work that's been done by the department heads in terms of the review. It's helpful to look at the, the fees, particularly in reference to, uh, what surrounding towns also are charging. So, so I found that very helpful. Because, in fact, I don't think I, as I go through it again, I don't know that there was anything that were substantially changed.
That's, that, that's the point. I mean, unless, unless a commission or a department chair recommends an increase.
Right.
And rarely a decrease, but in each case, um, that we are adjustments. Um, we, we are, we will wait till the process comes in the time of year to, to, to reaffirm fees like we do with pool, pool passes and, and other, other fees. But, um, but I think this, this deserves some review.
Yeah.
Let's not do it this morning, because we want to finish up the budget. Linda, I'm talking about the fee memos, and, um, yeah, I, I think on the, our meeting on February ninth, we, we should have time to do it. But, so, because it's worth the discussion. The other thing is, I, uh, I have been working with, uh, Representative Tamal Day. Um, he's introduced legislation to, um, change the personal property tax exemption level. And, um, because when we looked at the, uh, personal property tax, we, we, uh, we charge, one, I don't think we're applying the exemption level currently, Linda, which the, the state had increased the personal, the exemption from five dollars to twenty-five dollars ten, uh, twenty years ago. Um, we would eliminate about eighty percent of our bills if, if, if they just allowed us to increase it to fifty dollars or a hundred dollars. Um, I.
Well, maybe a slight, um, we wouldn't necessarily eliminate the bills, because the bills, unless they don't have any, um, you know, and if they don't have any homes, because those components are part of the bill. So we would be eliminating the line on the bill.
Not the, uh, not the, not the real estate tax. Real estate tax is separate. The, uh, they, if they own a vehicle, then they're going to get charged on the vehicle. And then this is also an additional personal property item. For example, Kathleen, I think you pay a personal property tax on, on your home office. But I think, you know, people are paying bills of seven dollars. It's, it's cost more administratively for a business to have their accountant calculate the bill that it's worth. And the, the, the point is, we don't want to eliminate, you know, the, the personal property tax is actually quite important when it comes to some businesses like EverSource, which pays us half a million dollars a year in personal. And the, the, the point is, we don't want to eliminate, you know, the, the personal property tax is actually quite important when it comes to some businesses like Eversource, which pays us half a million dollars a year in personal property tax on their, on their electric wires and their, their pipes in the ground now with gas. And uh so uh, we, uh, but, but when we looked at it, I didn't realize how many, I think at fifty dollars and under with the exemption, we would eliminate two-thirds of the bills. And it's, it's kind of make-work. I think we would lose a hundred thousand dollars in revenue if, if we went to a hundred dollars. Um, but if the legislation passes to increase, either to increase the limit from the current twenty-five to fifty, or they probably will do an increase rather than saying, leave it to the municipalities to decide what level they want to have for an exemption. I, I prefer that because then we could decide locally, you know, how much we want. So that would be a revenue loss in the budget. If, if that legislation passed and then the town council was the one that has to approve a uh a, a, a a new exemption level before the beginning of the fiscal year. But we can absorb that loss in the, in the course of our, our hundred and fifty million dollar budget. Um, but I just want to mention it's something that we, we uh normally we're looking at increased revenues. This would be a decrease in revenues. Um, and it could be as much as a hundred thousand dollars. If we eliminated, I, if we eliminate, I think, I forget the numbers, uh, I think how many people pay personal property tax and, and, but again, it's absurd to issue a tax bill for four dollars. Um, when it costs more to cal, to calculate whether you have to pay four dollars. Anyway, just mentioned that. It'll be up to the town council if, if the legislation passes as a legislative approval locally as opposed to the, the exemption will increase from twenty-five to fifty dollars.
Linda, while you're logging back on, I, I let everybody know that you need about an hour um to prepare.
So let's, let's summarize our comments before we're going to. So I, have you gone through all the adjustments? Uh, we didn't make an awful lot. I was actually thinking perhaps we ought to make an adjustment to the kids in crisis uh uh level. I mean, two thousand dollars is pretty measly when they're asking for eighty-eight thousand. What, we're going to?
I'd be in favor of that, particularly because we've, the, the uh health budget, the human services budget's decreased by six and a half percent. So whatever savings we got there certainly justifies any increase.
Yeah. So I mean, I, I'd be happy to, uh, I wasn't aware, Bethany didn't let us know that, um, that that discussion was even going on. But what was the, uh, you, you missed, were you on for the discussion, Linda, as to Bethany's level for kids in crisis?
I was. I'm attempting to open my file here.
I think maybe we ought to add five thousand or what, what was, what was the bid and asked? We were at fifty
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-six thousand and they asked for eighty-eight?
You're eighty-nine, something like that. Yeah.
So Kev, what are you proposing?
I don't know, add ten thousand dollars? It, it, it's a, it's a very important service and I, and I think we need to focus on what the community foundation gives them, because it's not just our money. Uh, tax dollars, it's um, the community foundation, I think, gives them twenty-five thousand dollars or something that's uh significant.
So you want to go to sixty-eight?
What was it, at fifty-six and, and they raised it to fifty-eight and
Fifty-eight, yeah.
Let's, let's go to sixty-six or six?
Yeah, I, I'd be in favor of that. I mean, just the, the cost savings in, in her human services budget um is thirty thousand dollars, uh, again, because taking advantage of the uh general assistance fund, so.
We also had salary reductions, so.
And salary reduction, so, yeah.
Do you want, you want to go to seventy thousand?
I've asked um Bethany to come back on just so that she can be part of this discussion. She may have a.
I don't think she'll object to more money.
But she might have a better indication of where you think you should go.
And I also think she, she was also indicating that we don't need to go to ninety, I think.
I'm back on, good evening.
Yeah, uh, Bethany, thank you for joining, joining us again. I, we, we thought we would increase the, the kids in crisis beyond the two thousand dollars that you
Okay.
there is in about, and, and if we go to seventy thousand dollars.
They would be elated. They really, they don't want to lose us. I mean, we do, we do represent that one, you know, the benchmark and, and we're a charter member of this and they really don't want to lose it.
I think it'd be much better going in the direction where, where they need to go and show good faith that we, we don't want to lose them and
Yeah.
lose us.
I think it's an excellent move and I, I, I don't think we'll regret it at all.
And so let's go to seventy. That's another fourteen thousand dollars?
Uh, fifty-eight.
Fifty-six.
Oh, yeah, I mean, fourteen.
You're right, you're fifty-eight, twelve thousand dollars?
Twelve thousand from my, from my request, yeah.
Okay. Linda, you got that?
Yes, so we're going from fifty-eight to seventy? Okay, twelve thousand dollars.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany.
Thank you. Do you want me to stay on?
No, 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 thank you. But I, I did want to, you know, the, um what, do you want to do this before or after our break? Um, I wanted to comment on Board of Ed Capital that we, that uh, um, do you want to have discussion now or do you have other budget items you'd like to discuss? Kathleen?
Just, I just wanted, maybe, maybe you're going to help us with this, uh, Linda, uh if, if there was a, a single sheet that kind of gave us a sense of uh what our FTE changes are uh last year versus this year, whether it's part-time, full-time, uh.
Cheryl can probably address that. Cheryl, Cheryl's still on?
She is.
Yes, I am. I think in, we were requested to look at certain salaries from the unions. We did salary um research on a couple of our positions and five positions, we did look at changes in job descriptions. So there are additions there in regards to um positions. We are not bringing anybody on full-time. Um Anna is going to be helping Bill out, but that is a position we already had a retirement in, so we will not have any new um positions in regards to full-time.
So this, um, and it's, can you just, uh, do you need the screen up there, Linda? Maybe just if we can go to a little people's screen, uh, just.
Which screen do you want?
No, no, just I want you, not the, not whatever. Just on the, on, again, the full FTE, um, so one and as I'm going through the, my list here, so there is, do we have a, a, do we have three new project coordinators? Or is that the same person?
No, so that, that project coordinator is, is one person split in multiple budgets. And so finance is paying a portion of that salary. Um a portion of that is paid out of registrar voters salaries and then a portion of that, I believe, we're paying out of engineering, Tiger. Is it engineering or admin? BPW admin?
Sewer fund.
So.
Engineering. Shows up as an engineering.
Engineering.
Tiger, engineering and sewer fund.
Uh, the engineering fund.
Engineering.
And then a quarter is the, the first election's budget.
Right.
So, so that's one person or that's?
That's one person.
That's one person.
Who does, who does different special projects like the sewer fee project. Um, that, that's why I thought, I, I thought we were trying to pay it out of the sewer fund, not engineering.
No, because he was helping with the transfer station rollout as well. And that, uh, that, that, that effort is more substantial than the sewer at present.
So is that a new?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, another special project was our, our, our making the uh, making the transfer station fee electronic and, and we, we went to all online e, email, um, which we'd like to do with parking as well. We haven't gotten there with parking, but so that process, which takes a lot of, and then um the uh, the testing at, for the health department and the uh, and the is being allocated to finance. So because that's, so there's a lot of support in terms of the, we're trying to get to a point where every department is online and has online services and and we're dealing with by email rather than uh paper correspondence.
So that's a new position or we've already had that position?
No, it's a part-time position, but the part-time expense is being divided up to, to different departments that use the services. It's kind of a common utility, special projects.
So equal distrib, distribution, it looks like twenty-five thousand per department? Is that how it works or?
Tiger, Laura, Linda?
Yes, we have twenty-five thousand in finance, twenty-five in engineering and twenty-five in first amendment.
So it's seventy-five, not, not four pieces, three pieces?
Seventy-five, and then there's a small piece in the registrar voters because they also help out with elections.
Well, that's actually, the, the, that's, that's a separate.
Right, so they have, and they have a part-time budget, so that's absorbed within the part-time budget line.
Yeah. E, each, each budget center is using the person.
Okay.
First worked on the elections, you know, so it's kind of a multi-purpose job.
This looks like an increase year over year. I didn't know if it was just a constant.
This is the first time we put it in as, as dividing it up.
I see.
We were, we were taking it from various budgets. Uh, we decided to reflect it in the budget because it's not a full-time position. The person has benefits as a retired person, so there's no need, there's no benefit equation. Um, and it's an allocation of part-time to this budget.
It's like a consultant fee?
Yeah, it's not a contract. It's just literally a part-time work for different departments. When, when he works for the registrar, which he worked, worked for, for years, um, he, uh, they're paying part of it when he's working on the transfer fee, um, Tiger's budget is paying it, when he's working on the uh, the testing for the health department, it's coming out of finance. And uh, what's the other piece?
Communications, Everbridge.
No.
Well, the, the whole list, data maintenance.
But actually, actually, that's the first election's piece.
Right.
We're trying to get to the point where we, you know, we have a lot of systems that have an outside vendor does something for a particular department, for example, parking for our parking permits. But the systems don't talk to each other. So we will have email addresses in one database for parking that are, and we're trying to consolidate all the email addresses, which we've done with um, constant contact because we are communicating, like a direct department uses constant contact as does Lapman Center. So we're trying to consolidate that into one master resident database. So we know how to communicate with everyone at Everbridge, which we switched to last summer, is our emergency communication. So that's, when we have the master database, it, it will then go into Everbridge from a top-down communication rather than expecting people to re, register for Everbridge.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful. So I just want to understand, so just in total, total FTEs, we saw on the board of ed, it's one and a half. And I'm still not clear, what is the total increase, net increase of the um, the town?
I can create a summary because if you see on the, you have the individual department pages.
Yeah, I couldn't.
So I can add, I can add all of that up and just put on one sheet and that'll show year over year.
Okay, thank you.
But I believe in terms of total FTEs, sure, sure, correct me if I'm wrong, we have not, we have not gone up in FTEs, but I'll I'll put that side by side. I'll put that schedule side by side.
Yeah, one of the, one, one of the efficiencies, Kathleen, of, of town government versus city is we have part-time people who are either work part-time seasonally, like with the tax department, they bring it part-time, the clerk's office, town clerk brings in seasonal uh for particular purposes. Um, and this, this uh this special project person happens to be all, here all year, but is working for different departments. So hav, having part-time people.
Okay, I just, I, I couldn't see the full scope of that. I just thought it's in Bob's of it, so, thank you. I just want to say, Linda, I have worked with five CFOs over the course of my time, including, I was one of those five, uh, and you have done by far the best of uh any in terms of preparing um, this material, very helpful. And so I just, before you lose the system again, then uh, maybe I'm going to try this. I just want to say thank you very much. This has been very, very helpful. So, thank you.
Linda actually works, he's the budget director as well as being CFO.
I know that.
Which is, which is, we always had two, two people doing those jobs.
Exactly, yeah. Well done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Linda. Did, did we have other budget adjustments to discuss?
So I just, before you came on, uh, Kevin, we just, I inquired as to whether or not, are we putting together like a transition memo or a transmittal memo, excuse me, um, from Board of Finance, excuse me, Board of Selectmen to Board of Finance with some of these, I mean, I, we've all dotted down things in the margin in terms of things that we would suggest that the.
Yes, yes. For the past three years, I've put together a uh, a uh summary of what the Board of Selectmen budget represents.
Right.
Keeping in mind, it's largely department requests, which we haven't adjusted much, um, and explaining the increases and decreases. Then also adding the comments on the Board of Education capital's budget. So we will, we will draft that and share it with you and planning, probably getting it out by the end of next, end of next week.
Okay, thank you.
But on that subject, I mean, I, I, we might as well, I think we should, we should do it now and then let let, uh, as far as the, the, um, as I alluded to the other day, um, because of our advisory committee on buildings and infrastructure, which we started last year, um, we are focusing on how to work better with the Board of Education with their capital projects. Some of them are, you know, the town owns the, the five school buildings. Um, and uh things that are not maintenance-related, I mean, the custodians and the painters, they, they, they have a painter and a plumber and, and things that are not ordinary maintenance um, are appropriately done by the Board of Ed staff, but major capital projects, um, as Tiger currently does parking lots and, and uh the, the heating systems, which are in the roofs, are things that we really have, need to focus on. Does it make sense to duplicate expertise? And um, and processes in two separate locations, one for the town and one for the Board of Education, because it's hard to find, uh it's, so, so the Board of Finance will take this up either as a proposal to make a memorandum of understanding between the town and the Board of Ed as to how we will do these projects. Or the capital, the capital appropriation will be done in the town sign as we did for the Saks CHP boiler project. And then Tiger will have responsibility and we will coordinate with the Board of Ed for their, their concerns as far as timing and and uh, because in some cases we hire an outside engineer to design the project, others we do internally with Joe Zagorinsky and Maria, our chief, our town engineer. And um, but it, you know, it's really difficult to duplicate expertise in two organizations. So um we, I've had this discussion both with Todd Labiary and Neil Budnick and uh George Blavout, who sat on the advisory committee as well as Penny Young for the town council and uh that um, we, we need a different process to, to, to ma, to make us work more collaboratively and more more efficiently. In my view, and I, I think they agree. So, so the Board of Finance will take, will, will take this up in February. So our comments, my comments in, in our recommendation would be, we, we need either memorandum of understanding or the Board of Finance should consider putting the capital projects for the Board of Education in the town's budget. Roofs, heating systems, parking lots, um, everything that's a major capital expenditure on the buildings that we own.
Sounds great. Uh, Kevin, were, were you going to talk about this uh project? I see Claudia's on the line in terms of this redaction project?
No, that's in the budget. I think the, the problem with it is that it's, uh, well, that's a good example of something, you know, we for the past two years, I've been harping on the fact that we have to get more electronic and we have to have online, when, when we did our new website in the summer of two thousand nineteen, um, we had an effort, we had new tools that were coming with the new vendor slides uh for online services. Um, our, our, our town clerk has not modernized um with the uh uh, with, I, I think of seventy-nine vendors, uh seventy-nine clients of our vendor, we're the only town that doesn't have online access to, to, to uh town clerk records. And um, in, 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 in the time of COVID, that's, that's a real hindrance. Because um uh, we've had some employees being concerned about their, their um their health. And um, and for the most part, we've wanted people to be not having unnecessary visitors come in. I think for the, it's been amazing to me, the few visitors who have come in to pay their taxes in January. Um, yeah, last July, um, there were many more, but people have gotten the word that they, you know, to keep town hall employees safe. Um, it's easy to mail a check, it's easy to charge. And, but the town clerk ha, ha, has not done what could have been done years ago to accommodate the uh, the ability to have online access. So um, it doesn't really help to have that in the budget for next year because it's an immediate concern right now to be able to have. So, um, it doesn't really help to have that in the budget for next year because it's an immediate concern right now to be able to have online access. And on the other hand, it can't get accomplished until, if we started it now, it wouldn't be accomplished till August. So it's a problem that, uh, of our own creation that we could have addressed earlier. And, um. But, you know, the money's in the budget and, and it'll get done and we won't be able to. There's issues that, that we could face as to whether or not we want to have online access right now without redaction, but that's not on the table right now.
So that, again, the operating increase from fifteen thousand to forty-six thousand, is that the project then we're talking about? Or is that the redaction project?
That's the redaction project.
That's redaction project. Okay. And so that's something that we are starting now or that's going to go into next year's budget?
Well, we won't have the money until July first. But, but, but the COVID issue will probably be over. I mean, the concern right now is, is having visitors into town hall that are unnecessary. Every other, you know, Norwalk line records have been closed. Uh, because they have online access and everybody else has online access except us.
So I believe I have my marching orders. I'll put together, I've compiled the discussions that, that we had. I'll update the schedules. To reflect the changes, I'll show a before and after, I'll send you out the, the revised sheets. And then when we regroup in about an hour or so, I'll have a script like we do that reads all the budgets. And the changes and, and where we go from there.
Are we gonna resume at twelve o'clock or what time?
Um, it's, it's your call, I guess.
Well, how long, it's your call because how long is it gonna take?
I need about an hour. So if we say, to keep it clean, if we say resume at noon, that's perfect for me. I get an extra ten minutes. I get an hour ten.
Okay, so for whoever is walking, I see Katrina, Katrina's on and Deanna. Anybody else who wants to rejoin us at noon, we will basically take what Linda produces as a consolidated document and vote.
Kevin, we have received one letter during the course of the meeting, one email during the course of the meeting. Um, to the Board of Selectmen regarding the school start times. Do you, would you like me to read it? Or should I just include it in with the, the minutes?
Well, you know, we're not voting on school start, start times. Kathleen and Nick, I mean, you know, we can read the letter, we can read, read the.
You've all been on the distribution, maybe the next hour.
We, we, we've begun to see, I, I've received emails. I think some of them have been addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Rather than us individually. So, um, the town, the Board of Selectmen does not vote on the Board of Ed's operating budget. So school start, start times is not something this board. Votes on. Or has any say over. I mean, I may have a say if, if it comes to the Town Council as a tie vote in March, but I, you know. That's a separate responsibility based upon what the Board of Finance does and what the Town Council does.
Well, you all, you were all on the distribution, so you all have received this one, other letters have come in, but this during the course of the meeting. Uh, there was one.
I'll take, I'll take a look at that letter and, and others. So we've gotten, um, obviously many letters on, on that particular topic. As well as the library as well. And I, I would say in terms of the school start times, Kevin, I agree with you. I mean, we, we can look at the entire budget and, and sort of weigh in as to whether it's too high or too low or, or. Or just perfect. But in terms of particular topics, especially one that is, uh, clearly been vetted for many, many years. I, I, when I first got involved, I remember in my kids were at school, it was, it was an issue. And I appreciate what the elected Board of Education has gone through in terms of their evaluation of school start times and the superintendent and the staff. So I, um, with all due respect, I, I don't think that I'm in a position that I can decide whether or not that makes a lot of sense. But I do respect those that have analyzed it and, and, and have decided to go forward in terms of their recommendation for the. Half-year, I believe that it, it would, the proposal is so. I, I know it's, uh, it's a very emotional argument as well and, and that's why we, we have a, a very well-respected Board of Education. That's hopefully gone through all of that and, and, and has made their recommendation accordingly.
On that point, I would, you know, it's not that we don't care. I, I watched, I watched the Board of Education meeting the other night and Deanna's on and I, I respected the fact that Deanna. Has concerns about doing a half-year and, and I, I respect the fact that the, the parents of, of younger kids have real concerns that they feel are being ignored. So that's why we have a Board of Education. Nick was chairman of the Board of Education and it's probably the most controversial issue we've had in, in, in the last decade. Um, it's a very complicated issue and I, I applaud the superintendent and his staff to try to. Figure out the right solution. I mean. Perhaps, perhaps the solution is more buses to be able to accommodate everybody in terms of the, what, what's the best time for everybody? But it's, again, it's not that we don't care, it's just that we don't have any say. Unless, unless I have to break a tie vote in, in March, which I hope I don't have to do. It's not, it's not an issue of money. It's, it's not really an issue of money. I mean, they, they, they've got to decide what's best for the kids and.
I agree, I agree. I don't think it's a money issue. I think it's just. It's a vexing issue and as you said, Kathleen, I mean, it's been, it's an issue that's been around for a long time. You know, it, it reminds me of, uh, you kind of redistricting with the schools. It's, it's, it's got that kind of emotional. Uh, attachment and I, I can see both sides. But I agree with you, Kevin. It's, it's really not our, our issue. It's not a capital expenditure. It's a, it's an operating. Budget issue and, and we, we, we really don't have any say over the, the school's operating budget.
Okay, with that, I'm, we adjourn until noon time. Actually, we're pausing, we're not adjourned, we're pausing.
You want two sets of minutes?
Thank you. I'll thank you, all your viewers and we'll, we'll be back at noon time. Thank you.
See you soon. Thank you.
You want us to leave or just put it on hold? It doesn't matter?
I think it's better we leave and.
Yeah, the meeting for all and then you'll all just re-log.
That if we combine the, uh. The internal service funds for, for both health plans, that we'd probably bring a million dollars out of this, uh, out of this budget. Um, and I think the Board of Finance will probably do that. If we, if we combine the, the two internal, internal service funds. And that's probably just for starters in terms of where they'd like to go. So there, there's, there's more to be done here with the Board of Finance to try to get this mill rate down. You know, I, I hate to pass on a, a budget that shows a nineteen point three mill rate, but the reality is it's largely because we have, uh. Some numbers in here that will come down further. Uh, when the Board of Finance makes some changes.
And I think the one thing that was mentioned, and I believe we talked about this earlier as well, included in the Board of Ed budgets, that they are estimates. Of a little over nine hundred thousand in COVID-related expenses. And if we were to treat those the same way as we treated this year, if that was to be a special appropriation. Um, after the year, um, begins, if we can have that agreement. Then you're potentially looking at reducing that number by nine hundred thousand and just funding it differently as opposed to taxing and funding for it upfront. We would wait for those expenses and do it as a special appropriation, which is how we handled the COVID appropriations this year for the Board of Ed. So to your point, Kevin, between the health insurance and this, you're looking at possibly two million dollars net of that total.
Board of Finance should, should be able to bring this back down to where we hope to be. With something closer to the, keep the mill rate unchanged or, uh. But, but the other thing is too, the, I think that nine hundred thousand dollars represents permanent subs and stuff that they installed this year to deal with COVID. It's not at all clear that, that, um, come, come, uh, start a school that, uh. Those are going to be the expenses, but if they are and they go to the Board of Finance and ask for funding of those, just like the Board of Finance did last year. They really want to deal with, with real numbers and real, real proposals based upon the facts at the time. And, uh, it's hard to, hard to really know where we're going to be with COVID by August, but it's probably going to be significantly different. Kathleen or Nick, do you have any further?
Just on this issue of the, of the, you know, drawing down the fund, what, what, what is? I'm, you know, maybe ask Kathleen because she's, she, what, what is best practices for municipalities?
On, on the, on, on the general fund or the?
General fund.
Well, again, we, we, we've tended to overtax and generally, the, the policy has been, well, we overtax one year, we give it back the next year by, by subsidizing the next year's budget. But we've threw it through, you know, we, over several years here, this has built up way too much. And I know some people like Rich Townsend, I don't know if Rich is on here, some people would take it down a lot further than what's being proposed here, but that's not our decision. That's Board of Finance and the Town Council decide.
No, I know that. I, I'm, I'm fully aware of that. I was just wondering, you know.
Yeah, I, I, to your point, Nick, I would say that, um, it, it, you do have to keep on it. It, it has built up over the years. We, we've been using the collection rate of ninety-eight point five percent for many years and. And we're well over that. What, what do we, Linda, about on average ninety-nine point three, something like that?
I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, Kathleen, because I was going to suggest, we, we, we could recommend, the audit committee is not happy that we're. Budgeting at ninety-eight point five.
I've never been.
Yeah, we could recommend, um, and I talked about this with Todd, that the, recommend that they go to ninety-nine percent. Um, and that alone would bring in a half a million dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in terms of helping the budget.
Yeah, right. To, to me, I mean, even if you look at other towns, um, you know, they, I think we're the lowest in, in terms of our. Uh, calculation at ninety-eight and a half.
Well, we're, we're the highest with, we're the highest with actual collection rate.
I know.
With their accounting assumption is what it's going to be the next year.
I know. So it, it's, it's time to make the change. We've been talking about this for over ten years.
Why don't we put that in our recommendation? We, we, we won't, I don't think it's appropriate that we make the adjustment here. I mean, we could improve the budget by seven hundred thousand dollars right now. If you wanted to put that in our recommended budget. But I, I really think it's a Board of Finance decision and I think they're ready to, they're ready to make that change, but we'll let them make it. They're going to make some, some major changes here in February.
Well, I, I do think we should recommend that, Kevin.
Good, okay. I agree with that and I will. So again, I'll, we'll prepare, Linda and I will prepare the draft, uh, transmittal memo and we'll share it with you before we, we listen next week. Linda, do you have that?
Uh, yes, I got that down. So we'll work on that.
Is, is there anything else we want to talk about? Yeah, actually, one other thing on, on the internal service fund and the health, I, I didn't realize. On Tuesday, when Larry was explaining the budget and Kathleen, I think you introduced the idea of going to one common.
Pharmaceutical.
Administrator.
Administrator.
Which, um, you know, we use Blue Cross Blue Shield, they use Cigna. Um, I don't think we need to do that, um, in order to have this, one internal service fund. And Larry actually made a comment, which I thought was a response to, he said, we have to be careful, the Board of Ed is not subsidizing the town. Uh, health plan. You know, the way, given the fact that the benefits are negotiated with collective bargaining agreements, the, the benefit, the, the benefits would be calculated as they are now.
Correct.
Each plan would, would be calculated, their benefits, the, the, the amount of contribution of employees would be calculated based upon their plan designs. And it's simply the funding of the, of the backup payments beyond the, uh, what's appropriate to pay claims. So it, there really would be no subsidy. Uh, because it's, the, the town is, is, is paying the tax, the employer side of both plans.
Right.
Just so we're clear that, um, you know, the, there would be no subsidy with a, with a combined internal service fund.
Agreed. And a combined reserve plan, I think it makes.
Now possibly, you know, I think, I think Larry indicated it's probably more complicated to try to run two plans. With one administrator, um, in terms of, but, but that might be the way to get to more savings through pharmacy and that type of thing, but.
Yeah.
You know, I, I suppose, I suppose it's a matter of convincing the pharmaceutical companies or the, the, that, um. That were one plan with eighteen million dollars of purchasing power and not, you know, our plan is six million dollars and their plan is twelve million dollars.
Well, as I said, I'm happy to, to work with whatever team might be looking at that more deeply.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know whether you're going into any of the other line items, but I, I just had a, or, you know, just a suggestion and as you're starting to draft the. Transmittal on the library, are we going to come to that later?
Well, there's no, on the operating, I think they, they, they come in at flat two percent, which is, um. And I, I don't anticipate the Board of Finance is going to do anything about that. That's what they, that's where they have met.
It'd just be with a, a recommendation, uh, this would be my recommendation anyway. That going forward, I, I am, as I said to Linda, I'm very impressed with the level of detail that we have at every level. Uh, of our departments and, and, you know, the areas of which we support. And I probably would add the New Canaan Nature Center and the library together to say. I'd like to see a little bit more detail in terms of the operating budget, given that. Not on the, uh, the nature center as much, but given on the library. Um, the two million plus that we provide on an annual basis. Little bit more detail, I think, would be helpful as we understand, uh, what the, how the requests are developed in, in the total. So.
I'm passing through that note. Um, I, they do provide their line item. It's on page eighty-two.
That's it, okay.
Would you like, it should need detail more than that, but they do provide their line item detail.
I guess I was just looking at the, the one line item that we have, just, just the total. Okay, so.
You'd like to see their entire financial statement?
No, 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 give me a second here while I just review. So I'm on page eighty-three.
So it starts on eighty-two. And the very first line is the town contribution, the two point four million dollars. And then they list their other sources of revenues for their total income of three point one and then the detailed expenses.
Yeah. So that's all of their. Income items and then. That's all their income, correct?
Income is the first half of eighty-two and then the rest is expenses. They have their salaries.
Right, yeah, yeah. I haven't all highlighted, I have notes in the margin, but it's unclear. Uh, okay. Okay, I'll probably withdraw my statement then. It does look like they have given us a, a complete detail on things like. Cleaning and sewer tax, et cetera. Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Sewer fee.
Says sewer tax here. I don't know who wrote that down.
And Stewart spelled wrong.
I know.
Walk us through this, Linda, what do you want us to do?
Okay, so basically if there are no additional, um, adjustments from what we talked about earlier. Uh, this is the approval of read, the budget read, the text, which you typically go through. You could either read, um, each line individually. I know last, two years ago, this is what you did. Last year, you just read the total, the numbers that are highlighted. But it basically says what the general fund expenses are, what the revenues will be. Sewer, operating and capital, and then the smaller funds and that becomes, um, you know, you make a motion and it'll approve. And then this gets forwarded to the Board of Finance. And then on the capital, you basically, um, I believe we don't call it approval, it's an acknowledgement of the capital. That gets forwarded to the Board of Finance, um, as presented in your documents.
Okay, well, since this is on the screen, courtesy of Zoom. Uh, that, that the public can see what we're looking at. And we're not looking at our tablets, we're looking at the screen. And, um, why don't I move that we approve. The proposed two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal budget as follows. Um, for the general fund. Uh, a total general fund operating expenditure budget of one fifty-seven, six seventy-five, eight forty-seven.
Second year.
Should, should, should we do it by separate motions, Linda, or just one motion after?
Uh, it doesn't matter. I don't know, Tucker, you care. Um, in the past, you've done individual motions for the revenues, for the expenditures. The sewer and then the capital funds together.
Yeah, I would prefer them individually. Yeah, I would prefer them individually.
Yeah, that's what we've always done.
From the top down or just from the ma, the major categories?
Major ones, I think.
I think you're fine with the major ones.
So I just moved one fifty seven, six seventy five, eight forty seven as the total expenditure budget. Second?
Second year.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. The general fund revenue budget total, which includes the, the, well, the general fund operating revenue budget, which includes the general fund bed revenue budget total of eight thousand, eight million, six oh six, four fifty four, also includes a fund balance contribution of six point eight five million. The amount to be raised by taxation, one forty two, two nineteen, three ninety three for a total general fund revenue budget of one fifty seven, six seventy five, eight forty seven. I move that.
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sewer operating and capital funds. The sewer operating fund budget total is one million, five forty nine, eight seventy one. The capital budget is three oh eight, seven two five, and the sewer fund revenues total is one million, eight eighty four, oh thirty seven. Why don't we just have a? Well, the operating is the, is the expense budget.
So you're moving.
And you can motion these together.
Yeah, so I move, I, I move that. Second?
Second, second year.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the small funds, the dog license fund for thirty thousand, six oh five, the parking fund for one million, seven, two sixty. The railroad fund for one hundred fifty five thousand, oh twenty one, rental property fund for ten thousand, nine hundred. Wave any fund revenue expense budget for five hundred seventy five thousand, six hundred. And the movie theater fund revenue or expense budget of one hundred thirty nine, oh eighty eight. Any questions about those?
Are these the balances of the funds, Linda, or are these, this is the net annual?
This is the, this is the net annual expense.
So I move those and do I have a second?
Second.
Hold on, I think Kathleen, Kathleen is on to something.
Well, the movie fund talks about revenue and expense budget, revenue.
No, I think the parking fund, the parking fund, that is a fund balance. Let me give you the right number. That is not the annual budget. Yep, the parking fund is a hundred and ninety five thousand.
Yeah.
Not a million. So that would be a correction.
Right, so is that the is that the excess over the old permit rates that builds up into the parking fund? No, that's, the other parking fund is eight hundred thousand. This is the railroad, railroad parking fund? Railroad fund is one fifty five. I'm confused by that number then, at one ninety five.
Yes, it's not that number. The number is one ninety five thousand, not a million. Their operating budget and revenue is one ninety five thousand.
So just to double check, all of these others, the dog license fund, et cetera, those are the annual, the one year net revenue minus expenses, thirty thousand dollars. It's not the fund balance.
Correct.
Okay, so the only one is the parking fund.
And the wave, is the wave any fund, wave any house or wave any?
Pool.
Pool, that's, that's confusing. Wave any pool?
Wave any pool.
Is that clearer to everyone? Have we just moved with the balance change there, one ninety five for parking?
Yeah, you'll just clean that up, right, Linda?
I will.
Yeah.
Okay. Move seconded, discussed it, all in favor, aye?
Who seconded it?
Nick moved it and Kathleen seconded. This completes the approval process for the Board of Selectmen for the proposed two thousand twenty one, twenty two fiscal budget. The budget will not be forged in Board of Finance as per town charter. And we will, as I said, prepare a transmittal memo as we have last year and the year before. And I will share that draft with you both before we send it off next week. Do we, we don't have anything else for the agenda?
No. Capital budget, correct?
Pardon me?
Did you acknowledge the capital budget to move forward as?
Well, I thought this, we just said this completes the approval process, but so we.
Do you need a formal acknowledgement, Linda?
I move, we acknowledge the the capital budgets that we reviewed that will be going to, to the Board of Finance and.
I'll second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we, can we go back to the the gallery? That concludes our budget process for this year. We will meet again in two weeks. When we'll take up the Public Safety Tower that was deferred and I think we should take up the the fee discussion, fee review.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
And then we'll probably have another recommendation for Board of Assessment and Appeals.
Well, we have a couple appointments to make. Right, not necessarily assessment appeals yet, though.
Well, so I'd just like to thank Linda and his team as well as all the department heads with, you know, giving their input and and also you, Kevin, for, you know, guiding this budget ship to the next port.
Well, Linda, as, as Kathleen acknowledged, I mean, Linda, you're doing a terrific job, not only our financial reporting, but in this budget process as Budget Director, so thank you for all your hard work. I know you're, you've been challenged and and the results are great, so.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's amazing. Again, I said this before, but I mean, we, for years, we've always had two, a budget, separate Budget Director and CFO and he's, he's doing two, two for the price of one. And a great job, too.
Fabulous job. Linda and Kevin, was this easier than prior years or about the same or difficult?
More difficult in the sense that the COVID thing really was us less than it did the Board of Education, obviously, but the Board of Finance's guidance, they're intentionally kind of being hands off until they can see really where we are now. And I think, you know, the, the good thing is the Board of Finance really gets this budget now. So I think we can make some good progress and further progress along the lines of the, the insurance, health insurance and and also the, the capital projects. So I think I'm pleased, I, you know, I kept hands off pretty much for the department heads this year rather than, but the important thing was too, that we had a lot more confidence, our numbers were accurate as we came into the, presenting the budget, so we made no mistakes this year. I hope we.
A million dollars instead of a hundred and ninety five thousand.
Knock on, knock on wood, but next week we'll discover something we missed, but I, but that's, the nature of the budget process, I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into bringing strands of information together and trying to bring up realist, realistic estimates for what next year is going to be like, so it's a lot of work and it's been going on since mid-December. And it's nice to get this first stage over and now the month of February will be the Board of Finance and and then the Town Council can have at it and.
Well, well done.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone.
Okay, I move you adjourned. I'm, I move you adjourned at twelve.
Second year.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.